Now.
Welcome, everybody, to the February 4th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Can I get a roll call, please?
Yes, Chair Gutierrez.
Here.
Vice Chair Hogan.
Here.
Secretary Clow.
Here.
Commissioner Chavez.
Here.
Commissioner Faulkner.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Is he here? Commissioner Garcia, you're muted, sir. Okay, Commissioner Lawrence.
Here.
Commissioner Picarello.
Here.
And Commissioner Satania.
Here.
And I will note that Commissioner Garcia is present. Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Moving on, Pledge of Allegiance, Commissioner Picarello, if you would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, double muted there. I pledge allegiance for Richard Stan, this nation under God, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we're moving on to the approval of the agenda. Any changes from staff?
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. There are no changes from staff.
Any changes from the commission? Mr. Chair, move approval of the agenda. Commissioner Hogan?
Commissioner Faulkner, a second.
We have a move for approval of the agenda. You take a roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Commissioner Clow.
Yes.
Commissioner Faulkner.
Yes.
Commissioner Hogan.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Picarello.
Yeah.
Commissioner Satania.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, the motion has been approved.
Thank you. Now, we're going on to the approval of the minutes from the January 7th, 2021 meeting. Do we have any changes from staff?
Thank you, Chair Commissioners. No changes from staff.
Any changes from the commission? Commissioner Hogan moves to approve the meetings of January 7th, 2021.
Commissioner Faulkner, a second.
Thank you. If we can get a roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Commissioner Clow.
Yes.
Commissioner Faulkner.
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Picarello.
Yeah.
Commissioners Satania.
Yes.
The motion has been approved.
Thank you so much. We have no findings or conclusions, so we'll be moving on to new business. And our first item for new business is case 2020-2998, 4193 A and B Fairley Road, and 6450 Camino Rojo Final Subdivision. Mr. Escobar is the case planner, and if you'll go ahead with your presentation, Mr. Escobar.
Everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, this is, again, this is case 2020-2998, 4193 A and B Fairley Road, 6450 Camino Rojo Final Subdivision, Jenkins Gavin, Inc., agent for Homewise, Inc., owner. He requests approval of a final subdivision plat for 56 single-family lots. The property is approximately 10.05 acres and zoned R5. The staff recommends approval of the final subdivision plat to the recommendation and recommendations of technical corrections in Exhibit A. Conditions and technical corrections adopted as part of the preliminary subdivision plat affecting the subdivision plat filing, recording, and/or billing permit for the construction of the project are carried forward and adopted as part of this final subdivision plat as recommended. There are two motions that need to be met. Approve or deny the final subdivision plat for case 2020-2998 subject conditions and approval and technical corrections recommended by staff, and approve or deny the findings of fact and conclusions of law for case 2020-2998 as shown in Exhibit A. I'm going to bring forward an error that was that was found by our water department. The water budget for the subdivision was was 5.69 when originally approved for the preliminary subdivision plat. And the new water budget was found to be 6.38. What the applicant didn't do was include the landscaping. The applicant has been notified and is working with the Water Division to amend their water budget to reflect the current total, which is 6.38. This approval, the approval criteria, 1437C, has been met. And with that, I will answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Escobar. Do any of the Commissioners have any questions for clarity on Mr. Escobar's presentation? Right, seeing none, we'll move to the applicant, Ms. Jenkins.
There is Commissioners.
Hi, I would like to swear you in, please. Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jennifer Jenkins. My address is 130 Grant Avenue, Suite 101, Santa Fe, 87501.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Jennifer Jenkins with Jenkins Gavin here this evening on behalf of Homewise in request for final subdivision plat approval for the Mira Flores subdivision. The commission granted preliminary plat approval for the subdivision on November 19th. And we, excuse me, I'm looking a little lighting here. So I really don't have anything to add. We are in agreement with all staff conditions and technical corrections. And I would, I do have a presentation, of course. I would be happy to go through some of the slides, especially for the Commissioners who, you know, weren't present in November, if that would be helpful. And otherwise, I would be happy to stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. A quick poll of the Commissioners. Would you like to see the presentation and slides? For Picarello, Chavez, you both good?
I'm good. Thank you.
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. I think they'll skip on that. Moving on, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody from the public who would like to testify on this case?
Chair, it looks like there are some members of the public who would like to testify on this final subdivision plat case. Members of the public, if you'd like to testify, and you're calling in, you can press star nine if you'd like to speak to this case. Otherwise, you can use the raise hand function if you'd like to speak to this case as well. The first person it looks like we have to speak is Jody. Jody, go ahead and unmute yourself, and you'll be sworn in, and then you'll be given two minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jody Densmore. My address is 2309 Cae Pacifica, Santa Fe, New Mexico, 87505.
Thank you.
Yep. Yep. The, I think the biggest concern is water. The state, yesterday, there is a, there is an article out that the state asked farmers not to farm unless it was necessary because we have no water. How are we asking farmers that provide food and it's their livelihood? How are we asking them to not farm because we don't have water, yet we're going to have new housing? Not just the new housing of the folks that are going to move there, that would move there, but the building of the entire place, the amount of water that it takes for the construction. How is this not ethically on anybody's mind to keep building these big complexes? We do not have any water. We are in a deep drought, and you are asking farmers to not farm unless it's necessary. That doesn't make sense. Can anyone explain that to me, or tell me what the thoughts are surrounding the water, the deep, deep water issues in New Mexico?
Thank you, Jody. Are you done?
For now, yes.
Thank you so much.
Chair, it looks like the next person you'd like to speak is Ray. Ray, I'm going to go ahead, allow you to talk. Please unmute yourself, and you'll be sworn in.
It's soft. You've got the cotton gossip on that. So it's a three-pack, you're only 2995. Hello, can you hear me? Okay. Okay, let me turn, hold on. Maria. Turn off the TV volume. Sorry.
Okay. Okay, I'm fine. Okay, do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. I swear.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Ray Romero, 6312 Cae Sanate, Santa Fe, New Mexico. I'm the subdivision that is, I guess, north of the proposed division off Fairley Road. And I got three concerns about my address. May I do that now?
Yes, please.
The, one of the concerns is on, on my page 18, on the traffic impact studies that were made on Airport and Fairley. Living here for over 30 years, I noticed the increase in traffic and especially on Airport and Fairley Road in the mornings, trying to get anywhere. When the school is completely, the schools are completely going, and they're not now. And also with all the development that's going on, on all around us, I don't, I don't believe that the traffic impact analysis is correct. That, I just want to put that on the record. And it's a right-in, right-out situation there. I don't see how Fairley can be used as a key access point to this, this new subdivision. And, and I, and I believe that we're going to have a lot of cars cutting through our subdivision to get through Country Club Road from our subdivision. So we're going to see an increase in traffic in the area. And the stacking coming into from Airport Road on a, on a left turn into Fairley, I think the car, the, the bay that's there right now, maybe, maybe holds about four or five cars. I'm not sure. I'm not a traffic engineer, but that's going to get crowded, going to be very dangerous for people traveling west on Airport if it's going to be stacking traffic, trying to turn left on Fairley, especially in the mornings. That's one concern. And the other question I had is, I read in the report, I can't find the page, regarding signing of Fairley Road. I believe there's a special designation that's going to be indicated for Fairley Road. And if someone can address that, I'd appreciate it. I can't find it in my notes, but I know I read something there that they're going to designate a special signing for Fairley Road as a, some, some kind of, kind of an access, but to the, to the east or west of Fairley Road, I'm not sure. And then the.
Oh, Ray, I apologize for interrupting you. I, I think, I don't know if we mentioned, we should have mentioned that we normally do a two-minute limit. So that is the two minutes. I'm just alerting everyone that that's two minutes. So we respectfully request that you wrap it up, please, fastish.
I'm fine.
Thank you, Ray.
Chair, there's a, next speaker's going to be Nat. Nat, go ahead and unmute yourself. You'll be sworn in, and then you'll be given two minutes to speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
You swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Nat, N-A-T, Dean, D-E-A-N. I have to give you a protected address because I am a victim of domestic violence. So that will be a Secretary of State's box, PO Box 1888, Santa Fe, New Mexico, 87504. Is that acceptable?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. My concern is Camino Rojo has a very, very narrow way to pass on the street, either to the right or to the left. There are some parking cutouts, but it is only on occasion that those are utilized appropriately. And it is a very winding, dangerous street without clear vision going in both directions. And I am concerned for the children that play on the many cul-de-sacs that are on certain, at certain times of the day that merges into the street traffic of Camino Rojo. And I have a concern about the safety of drivers, of pedestrians, of children. Many times, the sidewalks are impassable because the plantings are not cut back. I'm not sure there's a clear understanding of the residents that if a planting area is abut their property, that they are the ones responsible for maintaining it. So I think we need better lines of communication, clearer, safer traffic, eagerest in access, and that we take that into consideration. I also heard the gentleman speak earlier about Fairley Lane, I believe, being one of the eagerest in access routes. So I'd like to just state my concerns about the safety of pedestrians, of traffic, and of residents. Thank you very much for your time, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any hands up, but I will ask again, is there anybody that wants to speak to case 2020-2998, Fairley Road, Camino Rojo? Hey, James? Did I see James raise a hand as you go down?
Chair, I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, we have two telephone call-ins.
If you're, there's James. If you're calling in to speak on this case, on Fairley Road's case, you can raise your hand and be sworn in by pressing star nine from your phone. If you're waiting for the next case or cases, then you don't have to raise your hand right now. James, I'm going to go ahead and allow you to talk. Please unmute yourself, and then you'll be sworn in and be given two minutes to speak.
Could you please unmute yourself?
James, can you please press the unmute button? Chair, it appears we might be having technical difficulty here.
Okay. His hand just went up and down. Nobody on the, on the call-in? No one?
No, Chair.
Okay. If, if James can unmute himself, we'll get back to him. If not, let's proceed and open it up to the commission for questions. Okay, Commissioner Garcia, I see you have your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I just wanted to actually revisit a little bit real quickly because there was some correspondence that we got in regards to this case. And I believe it was a man by the name of Greg Keller. And there was some requests of some additional signage, if there was a possibility of maybe adding that in there. Showing two additional stop signs at the intersection. So this would kind of go back to possibly the safety of the, you know, the traffic and congestion. I believe that having the three access points to this development will definitely help ease up a lot of the traffic at some of these intersections. But I believe one of the questions was Fairley Road and Camino Rojo making this a four-way stop. I don't think that's going to happen. It's too close to the, to the other, to the street light. And I think the other one we had was no right turn at the corner of Camino Rojo and Avenida Chamisa. Is that something that can be looked at?
Oh, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Garcia. I believe that Mr. Keller has been working with the Public Works Director on a traffic calming issue. So as soon as all of that has come together and they're able to do a study, many of those issues will be addressed through that process. And and that's kind of where the sign issue is. That's, that's, that's where the traffic calming will be taking place.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Escobar. I just wanted to, to make sure that there was something that was already being done to address Mr. Keller's concerns and hopefully helping out with some of those traffic calming issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Commissioners Satania, I see your hand up, and let's, let's see if we can get back to James real quick.
Let me see. James, go ahead and try to unmute yourself again, please, and you'll be sworn in and be given two minutes.
Mr. Burke, let's, but why don't we go back to Commissioners Satania? We'll try James again in a minute.
Yes, I have a question for Ms. Jenkins.
Commissioner Satania.
Okay, great. There you are. You have to say something to pop up on the screen. How are you? I noticed when, when I was, when I was reviewing the report here that there was only, there was only a couple of people that spoke last time when this was brought to the commission last time. And that you, that one of the issues that was raised, that adequate right-of-ways. It says here that would be an off-site improvement, and code requires them to build sidewalks along their frontage where it doesn't exist. She shared screenshots of the two lots with the Avenida de Chamisa address and the south side of the street without sidewalks. She offered, speaking of you, as part of the final plat submittal, to assess that possibility to connect the two streets. And I know this had raised, had been raised, but I wasn't sure if it actually got addressed. I didn't see if it actually got addressed. Can you speak to that, please?
Yes, I'd be happy to, Chair Gutierrez, Commissioners Satania. If I may share my screen, I have an image that would, that addresses that. Because we, we did look at that, and we do, we were able to make some positive changes. We weren't able to do it everywhere due to some of the existing constraints, but I'm going to go ahead and I will share my screen and show you what we came up with.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so on this image, so we're down at the south end of the project where the hammerhead turnaround is. On the bottom of the, which is the east side of the project, you can see where Entrada de Malagro comes through. And then Camino Rojo is here on the west, which is the top of the page. And then there's Avenida Chamisa that extends here. So everything you see in gray are sidewalk improvements. So what we were able to do is here on Camino Rojo, we are a, we are going to construct a new sidewalk extension to, because there's no sidewalk to connect to right here, but it does exist here. And so we are going to be able to connect our sidewalk to that existing sidewalk. We have to cross a neighboring property right here, but it is within the right-of-way. So there's no issue with access at that point. And then across Camino Rojo here, there is an existing sidewalk, but there's no curb ramp, ADA curb ramp here, so we're going to add one. And so we will have an ADA curb ramp here, and then we'll be able to cross the street here and get on to, on to this sidewalk area here. And then previously, as, as we talked about, we are wrapping a brand-new sidewalk along Avenida Chamisa. That's going to be in front of these two homes that will be accessed from Avenida Chamisa, and that will connect into the interior sidewalk network. The one place we aren't able to do anything because of the constraints is here on the north side of Entrada de Malagro. But we, we were able to make some nice improvements here on Camino Rojo.
Got it. Thank you for that. Chair Gutierrez, I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Burke, I don't see James's hand up. Commissioner Garcia, your hands back up, please.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Once again, I just wanted to raise the, the issue, and I, I don't know that it has to be explained at this point, but I, I know somebody's concern was water. And I know that goes to just about all of the construction development that's happening in the city. And, and I know now is not the time to probably go into a lengthy explanation as to how we get water rights for some of these developments and what they are, how, how it's dedicated. But maybe somebody can just add a little bit of knowledge to that for Ms. Densmore's sake, to understand how these developments happen and where they're getting the water, if that can happen, just quickly. Thank you.
Chair Commissioners, Jesse Roach from our Water Division is here, and is, I'm going to promote him to panelist so he can answer these questions about water.
Chair and Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Okay. I just wanted to briefly address the comments that were raised by the caller about water. We, luckily, because of planning done by people from decades before me, are in a very good position currently in terms of sustainability of water. We use typically in the last several years, 90% of our water comes from surface water resources, and we're resting our wells for dry periods. We have more than enough surface water and storage. And so the difference between us and farmers right now is that, that we do have that storage available, and we've rested our wells. So in terms of this current year, we are in a position where we will be able to meet all demands. In terms of the next five years, we, we also are in that position. Our current development paradigm is to have developers bring water rights that we move into our Buckman Well Field. But we are working towards a return flow pipeline, which will allow us to move that paradigm towards more use of surface water, which is where we want to be. And we do have a current planning process going out 40 and even 80 years, looking at impacts of climate change and potential growth. And so I would just like to assure the commission that we are in a, in, we are thinking about these things, and we do have the water to support this growth.
Thank you, Mr. Roach. We may be hearing from you again later this evening, but thank you. Ms. Pines, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Chair Gutierrez. I wanted to mention that it has been brought to our attention that our Zoom room is full in terms of attendees. We thought we could go above 100 attendees, but perhaps we cannot. That's in addition to everyone who's on the panel. So I just wanted to go ahead and announce that if there is anyone who is an attendee on Zoom right now who does not plan to speak, I would ask if you could please view the meeting on our YouTube channel. That would be fantastic. There's no limit on the YouTube viewing. The link to that YouTube page is on the agenda, which I think most of you must have if you were able to sign in here. But I would encourage everyone to watch on YouTube. If you go to YouTube, it's also City of Santa Fe 2 is the land use channel. So you can just go to YouTube and look for City of Santa Fe 2, and that will bring you directly to this meeting, which is live on there right now. And so I would really appreciate it if anyone's able to, you know, and then after you speak as well, we can take speakers. After you have an opportunity to speak, you can watch on YouTube, and more people would be able to join the Zoom. And with the chair's permission, I'd like to kind of repeat this announcement from time to time to make sure that we can provide as much of an opportunity as possible. I think one other option that we might have as staff is to perhaps move, I know we have some city staff in attendance, some of whom might be participating. I think we could potentially move some of you over to the panel, which would create a few more spaces for attendees as well, and you can hang out with your video hidden if you're not currently participating and speaking. But that would also, I think, open up some more space. So it looks like we've dropped down to 86. I'd like to put a huge thank you out to everybody who switched over to our YouTube channel. We really want to make sure that everyone has a chance to participate. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Sally. Mr. Burke, yeah, if you can put staff and panelists, I don't know what that does to our screen, but I'd appreciate that. And I think it'll work its way out as people talk. Others might want to try joining back in. I see two attendees with hands up, Pamela and Antoinette. We're still talking about case 2020-2998. So if you want to speak to this case, now's your chance. Please go ahead.
Chair, thank you. And sorry to the public, we purchased a webinar package that says 500. We're having technical difficulties. Chair, thank you. Um, and sorry to the public, we purchased a webinar package that says five hundred. We're having technical difficulties. As Sally said, so I am going to fill up this screen, and everybody's pictures are going to get very much smaller. Our next speaker is going to be Pamela Schaper. Um, Pamela, go ahead and unmute yourself. You'll be sworn in and given two minutes to speak.
Okay, I, actually, I'm not sure if I was able to just get on. Are you on the Zia? On the Zia? Okay, so I take, uh, I want to speak during that one.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Keller, I see your hand up. If you're here to speak on, uh, Camino Rojo in Fairly Road, uh, please keep your hand up. If not, put it down if you're here for the Zia.
Mr. Keller, um, I, I know you'd probably like to speak on this issue, so, um, please unmute yourself, and then you'll be sworn in. Um, and then you'll be given two minutes to speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Greg Keller. My address is six, three, four, five, Avenida Chamisa. I live directly across the street from the planned subdivision. Uh, first of all, thank you, uh, for allowing me to speak. Be very brief. I submitted some comments to Dan Askewell. Uh, my compliments to staff. Uh, they've been very helpful in this process. Uh, our comments very briefly, uh, we were looking for some more signage to cut down on the cut-through traffic and also to slow the traffic down, uh, for safety purposes. The additional signage, uh, was, uh, to make the Fairly Road and Camino Rojo intersection a four-way stop and to add some signage at the east end of the property. Where we would like to have a no-right turn and a sign that says no through traffic on Avenue Chamisa. Very simply, that's it. Again, thank you very much, and if you have any questions, I'd be more happy answering for you. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Greg. I don't see any other hands up, but I will ask again, is there anybody else here to testify on, on the Fairly Road Camino Rojo subdivision? Uh, Nat, I think you've already testified and, and had your two minutes. Anybody else? Okay. See none. I will, I will close the public hearing portion of this meeting and turn it over to the Commissioners. Right, don't all jump at the same time. No, no.
Mr. Chair, if you're ready for a motion, I'll make one motion.
I think I'm ready. I don't see any, any hands up on the Commission. Thank you, Vice Chair Hogan.
Commissioner, I would like to motion approval of case number twenty twenty, twenty-nine ninety-eight, forty-one ninety-three, A and B, Fairly Road and sixty-four fifty, Camino Rojo, final subdivision. Uh, and that is, uh, subject to the, um, conditions of approval.
As we figure, Garcia, I'll second that. Thank you. So we have, uh, moved by Commissioner Hogan and a second by, uh, Garcia. Can we have, is there any discussion? Okay, see no discussion. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Cloud?
Yes.
Commissioner Faulkner?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hogan?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Piccarello?
Yes.
Commissioners Satania?
Yes.
The motion has been approved.
Thank you. Okay, let me get.
Good, uh, Mr. Chair, did you get the findings?
The findings of fact.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to motion approval of the, um, finding, in fact, some conclusions of law for case twenty 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 ninety-eight, as shown in B.
Commissioner Faulkner, a second.
Thank you, Commissioner Hogan and Commissioner Faulkner on the second. Thank you so much. Have the roll call vote, please.
Um, yes, Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Cloud?
Yes.
Commissioner Faulkner?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hogan?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Piccarello?
Yes.
And Commissioners Satania?
Yes.
The motion has been approved.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Moving on, um, yes.
May, may I apologize, Chair Gutierrez, uh, members of the commission. I just wanted to mention that we are down to, uh, an appropriate number of attendees. We've got eighty-three. We know we have room for a hundred. So we're doing great. I just want to thank everyone who moved over to YouTube. And I also want to mention for the benefit of the Commissioners, um, who are trying to view all of us on your, your Brady Bunch squares, you should have options in the view setting. For me, that's in my upper right-hand corner to, I believe, go down to just the folks with their cameras on. I think we can do that. Is that an option on here, Mr. Burke? Is that not an option on this version?
I don't believe it's an option.
Gosh, I thought we could do that on here, but maybe not. Okay, I just wanted to, to mention that there might be settings to make it easier. But at least what we do know is that only the folks with their cameras on are showing up in the YouTube videos, so at least for, for all of our viewers, it'll be manageable. I know we have a lot of panelists now. Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm going to continue to monitor the number of attendees, and if we start, um, getting close to that one hundred, I'll make the announcement again and request that people move to YouTube, um, who are not waiting to speak.
Perfect, thank you. Moving on, we're going to be on, um, case number twenty twenty twenty-eight ninety-eight, North Zia Station, General Plan Amendment. And we're going to hear all the cases together for this, so that's going to be case twenty twenty, twenty-nine fourteen. Which is the South Zia Station, General Plan Amendment. Case twenty twenty, twenty-eight ninety-nine, Zia Station rezoning. Case twenty twenty, twenty-nine hundred, Zia Station rezoning. In case twenty twenty, twenty-nine oh one, Zia Station Preliminary Development Plan. Staff will be Mr. Logston, and you can go ahead with your presentation.
Okay, thank you, uh, Commissioner or Chairman Gutierrez, and I want to say welcome and hello to our two new Commissioners, Chavez and Piccarello. It's a pleasure to be in front of you tonight for the first time, especially with the large case. So yeah, um, for all of these cases, um, Jenkins Gavin is the agent for Zia Station LLC, who is the owner of the property. The total project area is approximately twenty-one acres, zoned R1 and within the South Central Highway, uh, corridor overlay. The two properties are on the northwest and southwest corners of St. Francis and Zia Road. Um, because the applicant will, of course, provide detail on the project itself and have a presentation. I'd like to keep my presentation right now, uh, short and focus on the approvals and the procedural elements of the commission's decisions tonight. Uh, as Commissioner, or as Chairman Gutierrez, you know, read out the five cases in brief. Again, it's one overall proposal we're considering, but it is, uh, procedurally, uh, divided up into five cases. So once again, the first one, twenty-eight ninety-eight is for the north property, General Plan Amendment. They're requesting an amendment from low-density residential, which is three to seven dwelling units per acre, to high-density residential, which is twelve to twenty-nine. Um, and that encompasses about twelve-point-one acres. The second case, twenty-nine fourteen, is a general plan amendment for the south property. From low-density residential, once again, three to seven dwelling units per acre, to transitional mixed-use for the south two-point-two acre parcel. Third case is twenty-eight ninety-nine. That is a request for rezoning from R1 to C2 PUD or planned commercial, or planned unit development, uh, for both properties, the entire twenty-one acres. Case twenty-nine hundred is also a rezoning. That specifically is the request to amend the boundaries of the South Central Highway Corridor uh, to exclude the two properties. And then the final case is twenty-nine oh one, which is the preliminary development plan. And they are requesting preliminary development plan approval for a mixed-use planned unit development to be developed in two primary phases and then some sub-phases. But the planned unit development would comprise about a three-hundred-eighty-four dwelling units, eighty-four thousand square feet of office, and thirty-six thousand square feet of restaurant and retail. Um, so now, we have to get that out of the way. Now that's out of the way. Procedurally, I just want to kind of clarify how these requests are interrelated and how the commission should consider the recommendations. All of the requests are for, uh, all of the cases are a recommendation to the governing body, except for the development plan. Uh, if the commission gives a positive recommendation, uh, to the governing body for the general plan amendments and the rezonings, then the commission could approve the preliminary development plan conditioned upon the applicant gaining approval uh, from the governing body on the other requests. And three of the five requests here are directly connected in terms of the commission's vote. The C2, uh, PUD rezoning, the development plan, and the request to be removed from the highway corridor. To clarify, the development plan is, um, required in conjunction with the C2 PUD request. And the development plan as proposed is dependent on being removed from the highway corridor, uh, primarily due to the three-story height. So should the commission recommend denial of the corridor request, then you would also need to recommend denial of both the C2 PUD rezoning and the preliminary development plan. Uh, if that is the outcome tonight, the commission still could recommend approval of the general plan amendments as you have done on other projects, um, most recently, the Geo Lane subdivision. Uh, this would essentially allow the applicant to kind of leave the hearing with at least some indication from the commission that a proposal of this type could be, uh, amenable and approved here at this site, just not the proposal they brought tonight. While all general plan amendments and rezoning requests are somewhat discretionary, they're all approved or denied against approval criteria in chapter fourteen. The request to be removed from the highway corridor is also a re- rezoning request, but perhaps the most discretionary of the decisions before you tonight. And it boils down, you know, there are other factors which staff report goes into detail on, but it does boil down to primarily a question of building height, two versus three stories. Uh, staff has recommended approval of this request, but we also understand that height and view sheds have long, long been important topics to, uh, Santa Feans. And so it is not necessarily an easy decision for the commission here. To assist you with that, I've tried to give you information about the purpose and intent of the highway corridor, uh, development patterns along St. Francis, background and, uh, about the city's planning efforts and investment in commuter rail, and a summary of previous governing body actions regarding this property. Uh, I believe these are all important factors to be, uh, considered, uh, in your decision. Whatever you do decide on a recommendation, you'll need to bet, uh, base either your approval or denial against the criteria in chapter fourteen. Assuming approval of all the requests, the applicant will also need to pursue several other courses of action as they move forward, uh, including gaining, gaining city approval, uh, the vacation of Galisteo right away, and approval and dedication of, uh, proposed new road alignment. Those are things that would come after this and concurrently as they move on. No, and I, I just want to make a, a note on comments from the public. We received many, many comments from the public. We kept an open dialogue with the Neighborhood Association, as well as anybody who reached out to us individually. Uh, I did my best to advise residents of the deadlines. Uh, unfortunately, we have had a handful of uh, people who just kind of missed out, and we encouraged all of them to come and speak tonight. And, uh, Jennifer is going to provide detail about the project itself. And we can certainly and will revisit any of the individual cases and issues on this. We have city staff on hand from the various divisions and departments that reviewed this project to answer specific questions on traffic, grading and drainage, parks, water and sewer, affordable housing. Uh, as always, we prepare draft findings of fact and conclusions of law, and, uh, we've also uh, provided draft motions for the cases. Uh, staff is recommending approval of all requests. Um, I'll leave my presentation at this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Logston. Does anybody from the commission have any, uh, clarifying questions of Mr. Logston before we move on? Okay, see none. We'll turn it over to the applicant, Ms. Jenkins.
Thank you, Chair Gutierrez. Good evening again, Commissioners. I am still Jennifer Jenkins, and I'm still with Jenkins Gavin, and I'm here this evening on behalf of Zia Station LLC um, and, um, SF Brown, the owners of the property. And I am joined by our consultant team, who are also here to answer any questions. I am going to go ahead and share my screen. I just, um, obviously, there are a lot of elements to this project, and frankly, I'm really excited to share it with you because I think it's really exciting. And, um, so I'm going to try to give you a really good understanding of the project, but obviously, we don't have the time to get really granular on some of these elements, and we will kind of maybe save that for the question and answer portion. And obviously, here to answer any questions, you know, that you may have. And again, I have, um, my consultant team standing by to address any questions directly as well. Okay, so we are here this evening to discuss the rezoned general plan amendment and, um, preliminary development plan request for the Zia Station project. As I mentioned, we're here this evening on behalf of SF Brown and Zia Station LLC. As some of you may know, SF Brown is a longtime local construction company and development firm who's developed many quality projects in Santa Fe over the last thirty-two years. Um, Meredith Mark Brown grew up in Santa Fe. They, um, Lee Brown, their father, also was a longtime developer in Santa Fe. Some of you may, may remember Lee. He was, uh, kind of, he was quite the, quite the character. And they, again, um, this is our, a local group who have dedicated themselves, um, to, to this endeavor. And we also, I'm also joined by Bohan and Houston, who are our traffic and civil engineering consultants. In an effort to create a really dynamic architectural environment as part of the project, we have engaged with a local group of, um, really talented architects that include Architectural Alliance, Autotroph, Lloyd and Associates Architects, and also HEDK Architects out of Dallas. And then Lanskape Architecture, provided locally by Design Office and Claudia Horn and her team there. So as, uh, Lee went through really carefully, this are, these are the requests that are before you this evening. A couple of general plan amendments, a rezone request from R1 to C2 PUD, and then the rezone request regarding the South Central Highway Corridor map amendment, and then a PUD preliminary development plan. So these are our subject properties. I think everybody kind of knows, you know, where we are. This is, we are on the west side of St. Francis Drive. The property, um, extends north and south of Zia Road and comprises about twenty-one acres. To our, um, west here is, is the Candlelight Neighborhood. This is Galisteo Road that currently terminates at Zia at this location. And then, of course, we have the Plaza Entrada Shopping Center with Albertson's, and then we have the Walgreens and other retail activity across the street. So for the purpose of the presentation, we've, we're kind of rotating everything. So, um, most of the imagery that we're going to show, the right side of the page is going to be heading north on St. Francis, and the left side of the page is going to be heading south on St. Francis toward I-25. So we're zooming in a little bit on the subject properties. Again, the north parcels comprise, um, a little over twelve acres, and the south parcels comprise just under nine acres. So this is the existing future land use map from the general plan. And as Lee mentioned, the, um, the majority of the south parcel is already designated as transitional mixed-use. That was done, um, and approved by the governing body in two thousand and four. And then at that same time, a general plan amendment for the balance of the properties was, um, was approved to was approved to a three to seven DU per acre low density res- um, residential designation. What I would like to point out here, because this is a little bit, but I, it's, it's a little unusual, so I want to explain the history of this. So here's Galisteo coming up again, terminating here at Zia where it currently terminates. Even as far back as two thousand and four, there, it was pretty clear that a realignment of Galisteo to pull that roadway further away from the Saint Francis intersection was a really important safety improvement. And so even as far back as two thousand and four, that um, improvement was contemplated. So it was contemplated even then that Galisteo may do something like that, which is very close to what we're proposing today. So that's why the corner of this parcel here has a transitional mixed use designation and the, the balance of it has the low density residential designation. So um, with the general plan amendment, we are asking to convert the balance of the south parcel, which is the yellow here, to it, just, just to extend the transitional mixed use to incorporate the whole thing. And then on the north, we are requesting a high density residential designation. So this is the current zoning along kind of this area of Saint Francis Drive, what I would call kind of our, the, the applicable segment, if you will, of, of the vicinity around the subject properties. So as you can see, they are currently zoned R one. R one is really the city of Santa Fe's default zoning. So when the city originally established a zoning map, um, undeveloped vacant properties primarily were just zoned R one. And then people over time came in and requested um, new zoning. And so um, but, so that just means that this property was never assigned zoning beyond what was originally established in the city zoning map. And um, and then we do have this little corner piece on the, on the west side of um, of Galisteo Road that is zoned R five. So what's really interesting about this, about the zoning in the area is it really gives you a sense of the development pattern and the fabric of this section of Saint Francis Drive. Of course, we have, you know, we have Albertson Shopping Center and the associated retail, and there's also office uses directly across the street. We have a multi-family residential here. We have more. All of this purple, although it's, it's zone C one, it's actually um, multi-family. Um, it's developed as multi-family, which is a permissible use in C one. And then as you get on the other side of Sawmill, there is multi-family residential all the way to I twenty five. And, and so what's interesting about this is you can kind of see that, you know, a certain amount of intensity of development along the Saint Francis Drive, which is, as we know, a major arterial and a state highway, which is appropriate. And, you know, industrial zoning that we see over here um, to south of the subject properties. And then adjacent to this intensity, you can see what happens is we start transitioning. Like, for example, here, we're transitioning from multi-family to R five. Here, we're transitioning from multi-family to R four. Here, there's a transition from multi-family to office, and then that trend, this is Saint Michael's High School in this location. And so, um, and for example, if you go over here on the other side of Seringo, we have multi-family that transitions to R twelve, and then that transitions to R five. So that really indicates, you know, the, that existing pattern that the city has repeatedly really supported in terms of how this um, area of Santa Fe has evolved. So this is kind of another view of the corridor, a little bit of a bird's eye view that, um, that explains this a little bit further. So you can see the Zia Station properties right here. And then um, surrounding us, you know, next door, we have Town Home Development here, that's part of Candlelight. And then we have, and then that transitions as you move west into single family residential. On the um, to the south, we um, we have one gas station under construction, and then there is an existing gas station. We have some warehouse, distribution facilities, um, industrial type facilities. And then we have Rodeo Business Park um, off of Sawmill Road here. And then on the east side of Saint Francis, you can see all of this orange, that's all multi-family residential. Again, that, that higher intensity development directly adjacent to Saint Francis Drive. And then we have this sort of central node of commercial services right here at that intersection of Zia and Saint Francis. That includes some medical office and of course, the institutional use of the high school. And then again, these, the, the multi-family transitions as you move further east. For example, here off of Sawmill, multi-family, then you have townhomes. And then that transitions to single family residential here. What's kind of funny is my house is right there. I, I just love that. So that's where I live. So this is also my neighborhood. And um, and then again, here's multi-family transitioning to single family residential further east beyond the, the higher intensity along the corridor. So there has been a lot of activity over the, over the last twenty plus years that have led us to this moment. And there have been policy initiatives, there have been incredible investments in public transit, everything leading us to where we are today. And so this timeline highlights some of those key really decisions and affirmations made by the city of Santa Fe in terms of identifying what is important to us and how have our values evolved over time. And this really starts in nineteen ninety nine with the update to the city of Santa Fe general plan. And we're going to talk about this a little further in the presentation, but the general plan touches on elements related to infill, elements relating to affordable housing, multimodal transit, transportation opportunities, walkability, pedestrian oriented. All of these things were established as important values for the city of Santa Fe. And then as moving forward, this, we have a multimodal transit facility report that the city conducted in two thousand and one. Specifically, Zia, the Zia Station site was identified as an ideal transit location. And then segueing to that, the, the um, general plan amendment I described previously approved in two thousand and four. Then we have the Mid Region Council of Governments doing a TOD study, identifying those standard principles for transit oriented development. Moving along, the MPO identifies Zia Road as a future rail runner stop. And then we have the rail corridor study that specifically addresses design guidelines for how this property should be developed in relationship to access to transit. And then we move forward with all the process that led to the opening of the Zia Station um, rail runner stop in two thousand and seventeen. And then following that, the city adopts a sustainable Santa Fe twenty five year plan that touches on many of these themes and many of the elements that are, excuse me, specific to this project. Things that this project is providing the city in alignment with these stated goals. And then just last year, the MPO adopted their twenty twenty to twenty forty five Metropolitan Transportation Plan. And so while a lot of that was going on, there was also activity related directly to this particular site. As um, some of you may recall, the south parcel used to be a pumice plant that was located at the southwest corner of Zia and Saint Francis. For those of you who are newer to Santa Fe or younger, may not remember that, but that was a, that was a significant improvement with a significant neighborhood impact. And um, SF Brown entered into purchase agreement to purchase the pumice plant property in two thousand and one. And within a couple of years, they started reaching out to the community to talk about how could this property be redeveloped? And which led, you know, there were some E N N meetings and charrettes with the community, which led to that general plan amendment in two thousand and four. And then thankfully, in two thousand and seven, they started demolishing the pumice plant. And then um, in two thousand and nine, there was a lot of activity um, and coordination between the city and the DOT around the opening of um, the commencing rail runner service to Santa Fe and the potential location of a station at um, on this property. And so things were put on pause while all of that was, was resolved. And um, and then SF Brown, once this site was identified that this is going to be a station, SF Brown engaged and built those improvements in terms of the drop off area and some improvements along Zia and sidewalks. And um, and all those improvements that we see there today, those were constructed and accepted by the city. And then um, what, and then we started back again in two thousand and nineteen where um, Merritt and his team reached out to me and my team, asked us to, you know, really put fresh eyes on, on this project. And what do we think is, is the right program, the right mix of uses? And started really revisioning Zia Station and um, kicked off a, a series of meetings with the community in, in two thousand and nineteen, which led to twenty twenty and our formal early neighborhood notification process for this submittal. So this is our proposed site plan um, shown in context to the surrounding neighborhood. And again, everything to the right is to the north, everything to the left is to the south. So um, as I mentioned, and as Lee mentioned, we are proposing to realign Galisteo Road to pull it further away from Saint Francis to create a new, much safer intersection at this location. Then Galisteo Road will be extended north to serve this north, north parcel. So that would be the access for the north parcel. The north parcel is a hundred percent residential development. Some earlier iterations of the plan that were presented to the community back between two thousand and eight, two thousand and ten did include commercial uses on the north side. But um, some of the feedback that was received along the way was, um, there was some um, concern about that, about introducing commercial activity here. So we've eliminated it. And the south side is um, adjacent, there's the, the rail runner station here. This is our, our mixed use portion of the project. That includes a mix of retail, restaurant, office and residential uses. So zooming in a little bit more so we can see this more clearly. Our goal here, oh, actually, there's multiple goals. What we are achieving here, we are achieving walkability, pedestrian oriented design. We're achieving access to multimodal transit options. We are achieving mix of uses. We're achieving a mix of housing types. All of these things are stated goals and objectives in numerous city of Santa Fe adopted plans. So looking at, as we zoom in a little bit on the access, again, um, to, to access the north parcel, you would um, off of Zia Road will be the new extension of Galisteo that terminates in a cul-de-sac just adjacent to the existing Arroyo. Here between Galisteo and our existing neighbors to the west, we're showing um, a, a couple of town home compounds here. And that is really serving as that transition from exist, existing single family development, transitioning to a town home type product. And then on the other side of Galisteo, we transition into multi-family product. And everything you see here, kind of in the darker brown, those are all two story elements. So we felt it was appropriate. And this neighborhood has single story homes and some, I mean, primarily single story and some two story homes. And then again, it's about a creating that gradual transition. And then what you see in the lighter colors would be three story buildings. There are two hundred and forty four apartments proposed here. And then on the south side, um, again, a realignment of Galisteo to pull it further away from Saint Francis. And that um, has incredible positive impact on how this intersection functions, which I will go into a little bit later. So this is our first access drive into, into the community. So you can take a right and um, we have building A is a residential building. Building B is a mixed use building, probably office on the ground floor, maybe residential up above. These are also two story buildings. What's important to note about these two buildings is based upon the grades. These are set actually ten feet below our neighbors here to the south. So from here or from Caie Luminoso, these actually read as single story buildings. So they, they do not read as two story. And then we have a small parking structure here that is actually a single story building. So there is um, parking on the ground floor, and then there's a ramp. And so they're basically parking essentially on the roof, and all of that parking is screened by a parapet. So again, from the roadway, this reads as, as a single story building. And then coming in, we have a loop road that serves these buildings internally. And again, everything that you see here along Galisteo is all two story. Again, transitioning from the town home development across the street, we have our own row of townhomes, really to mirror that development pattern. And one of the things we've done with the townhomes that we think is really special is um, is we have these front doors relating to Galisteo. We really like our buildings to relate to the street and really enliven the street instead of turning our back on it. However, we are creating a rear entry here where there's rear garages through some, sort of an alley in the back. And so um, and we're also adding some on-street parking on Galisteo here. The on-street parking is really beneficial because it um, A, it increases, you know, parking supply for guests, but also it serves to calm traffic. And it kind of gives the perception that the roadway's been narrowed a little bit and it slows cars down. We have heard concerns in the neighborhood about, um, concerns about speeding. We're also narrowing up some travel lanes along Zia that also serve to calm the traffic and, and address speeding concerns. And um, so these buildings here are um, you know, the great thing about the C two zoning, it's a really great mixed use zoning category permitting a variety of uses that create a really dynamic environment. So for example, building C could have office on the ground floor, and it could have office upstairs as well. Or if the market really demanded, there was more demand for housing, then there could be residential units on the second floor. So it, it, it creates that, that flexibility. So as the project develops and evolves over time, we can respond to market conditions and um, and again, creating that dynamic mix of uses. And then these buildings here are where our three story buildings are located. Again, we really wanting our buildings to, to relate to the street and really create life and activity along the street. We're doing a lot of landscape improvements, pedestrian improvements, really to, to really enhance and improve that pedestrian experience along Zia, which um, is not great and, but we, our, our goal is to make it um, a lot better and a lot more inviting to um, access the crossing here and to access the rail trail. And so part of what we're trying to create here is a sense of porosity where we have all these openings to the rail trail to get into the project or to, to leave the project and get on your bike or walk. And so all of these openings here create that connection to our surroundings in that pedestrian friendly um, environment. And then the middle here, this is really our, it's a very cool plaza space that we are looking forward to programming with, you know, outdoor markets or outdoor concerts or just a lovely outdoor space for people working here to come and enjoy their lunch on a, on a, on a beautiful day, which of course, most of our days here are beautiful. And um, and you can see, we're also trying to, you know, create a nice supply of easily accessible on-street parking. And our primary parking though, is in a subterranean parking structure that is beneath buildings um, K and L. So there is um, access to the parking structure here, and there's also access to the parking structure here that leads directly out to Galisteo. And um, and this is also, of course, it's really about how do we relate and celebrate the rail runner station in this location and enhancing and creating access for more people to avail themselves of this important and critical public investment in transit. So this is a view, so we, you know, our goal here is really a very high architectural standard. And we have a diversity, that's, again, that's why we have this very large architecture teams. We really wanted a diversity of vision. And how do we incorporate traditional Santa Fe vernacular that we're all accustomed to, whether it be pueblo or territorial? And then how do we, you know, take a contemporary spin on that and, and really do something that's really fresh? And then, but while creating a cohesive environment in terms of how we use materials. And so this has been a really exciting exercise, frankly, in how this, you know, can evolve. And these are our design concepts. So if you're across the street, for example, and you're leaving Albertson's and you're looking across the street, this might be what you see. You see the train is coming into the stop. You have a building here that is a mixed use building. You've got, you know, cafes, you've got residences up above. You, and then you have all of these wonderful access points to get you into this dynamic environment. And then as you can see, on, on the other side of Zia, you can see the multi-family buildings um, in the distance there. And so this is really about creating, it's about beauty. And beauty takes many forms. Yes, sometimes beauty, open space is beautiful, but good architecture is beautiful too. And Santa Fe is known for its good architecture. And so we really want to celebrate that. And so this is really about an entry in Santa Fe um, that celebrates Santa Fe. And then again, if you, now we're on, again, we're still on the east side of Saint Francis, looking towards the southwest. And you can see the, the residential buildings here, and then you can see the mixed use off into the distance here on the other side of Zia. One important point I want to make here, again, with how the site is being graded, these are three story buildings, but they're set below Saint Francis. And so from Saint Francis, they actually only read as two story buildings. And I think this is an important factor when we think about the South Central Highway Corridor. Um, this is an element that we, um, we, we are aligning very closely with the intent of that corridor. This is an element that we we are aligning very closely with the intent of that corridor as far as that goes. And then this is the view, if you are on Zia and you are heading towards St. Francis, you're heading east. Again, it's really about bringing life to the street and having these buildings relate to the street. And this is a theme that is repeated in some of the studies we're going to discuss a little bit later in the presentation. And it, you know, again, enhancing that pedestrian environment and the connectivity. And again, having really exciting architecture and community-serving uses in the project. So this is just, we can probably come back to this. If there's any further questions, this kind of zooms in on the on the mixed-use portion on the south side of Zia, which we really pretty much addressed. And this talks, you know, goes into the program. Again, we have those 14 townhomes right on Galvesteau, around 112 residential units on the south side. And then we're proposing 84,000 square feet of office and about 36,000 square feet of retail and restaurant. We are exceeding the open space requirement. We are exceeding the parking requirements. And then these are the permissible uses that we are proposing. And I do want to spend just a second to talk about the PUD and what that is and why it's important. As Lee mentioned, a planned unit development is based upon a preliminary development plan that is approved as part of a zoning request. And what the PUD does, it is basically self-limiting. It says, we don't just have C2 zoning, that is the proverbial blank check, that we can do anything that is permissible in C2. We are bound and governed by our development plan. If I want to do 113 residential units instead of 112, I'm back in front of City Council to request an amendment to my zoning. So this is about looking at uses that are appropriate in this location, in this context. So obviously, we're proposing residential offices, galleries and studios, different types of dining options, coffee shops, yoga studios, performance space. You know, these are the types of uses that, you know, this is about community-serving, neighborhood-serving uses within walking distance to a lot of rooftops. And and this is, this is really, this development plan, this planned unit development really defines what we're trying to achieve here. And so then as we come in with final development plan applications for each phase of development, we come back to planning commission for final development plan approval. So there had been some some concerns expressed by some neighbors that somehow the PUD created too much flexibility. It's actually quite the opposite. It, we, we are really defining what our program is and the mix of uses that we feel are appropriate. So again, these are some architectural renderings. This is one of our, kind of our flag, our key, what we're kind of calling our flag, Keystone Building at the corner of Z and St. Francis. Again, working with a lot of traditional vernacular here with with some contemporary materials, a lot of, you know, stepping the building back. And then we have some, you know, a little more contemporary take on on some of, you know, Santa Fe style. But again, making sure our materials are aligning with one another to create a diverse environment, but a cohesive environment. And then we show the townhomes along Galvesteau. And this is the parking structure that is on the corner of Galvesteau and Zia that I mentioned. Again, from the from the street, as you can see in this little image here, you know, it reads as a as a single-story structure and with with a lot of architectural details. So again, it's, it doesn't look like a parking structure. And then again, zooming in on the on the north side, showing the relationship of these buildings to its surroundings. And again, the north side program, as mentioned, we have those 14 townhomes, really to serve as that transition to our neighbors to the west, along with the 244 apartment homes. We are exceeding the open space requirements significantly. We're also exceeding the parking requirements. And as part of this initial phase for the north parcel, which is our first phase, we will be constructing all of the proposed roadway improvements. Oh, and one thing I wanted to mention, we're building a dog park. So this is a really cool feature that we're going to develop with some really great amenities that is going to be accessible directly from the rail trail and it'll be fenced. And so we're really excited about this. We think this, it's a beautiful, undisturbed property with a lot of nice, mature vegetation. So we're really excited about that amenity. So this is some really well-developed rendering. Since the, you know, since the north parcel is our first phase, this architecture is 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 further developed. And so these are a couple of views from Galvesteau looking, this is pretty much looking directly due east. And then here, we're kind of looking to the, looking to the southeast. And this is from the cul-de-sac at the at the north end of Galvesteau. And one of the comments we received from the neighborhood is really wanting us to incorporate, you know, traditional Santa Fe architecture. And so we we liked the territorial style in this application here, you know, doing a few things to add a little bit of a contemporary spin on it, but really honoring more of a traditional architecture, especially along the two-story buildings adjacent to Galvesteau. And as we talked about that kind of transitional areas, how do we, you know, appropriately transition from our existing neighbors? And what you see here in these areas, this is that transitional zone where we have one and two-story buildings that, and then we we transition logically to the to the three-story buildings that we were proposing that are focused along St. Francis and again, along Zia Road in this location. So it's all about walkability. And this image really highlights all of the pedestrian improvements that we're making to the to the project in order to make sure everything, you can get everywhere on foot or on your bicycle. And so all of the white, these are just highlighting all of our sidewalks, all of our pedestrian ways. The orange is the existing trail improvements. We have the rail trail here. This is the underpass. And then we have the trail improvements on the other side of St. Francis. And and in addition to this, we're also making some significant improvements, as I mentioned previously, to the sidewalk experience on Zia Road. On this portion of Zia, on the south side between Galvesteau and St. Francis, we're going to have eight-foot sidewalks here, which are going to be really great and generous, along with a seven-foot landscape buffer. So you're really buffered from the roadway and the vehicular movement on the roadway. And similarly, on on the north side, we're going to be increasing everything to six-foot sidewalks and there'll be a five-foot landscape buffer there. Again, really enhancing that experience because of course, this is a primary pedestrian crossing here as well as crossing St. Francis here. And one of the most exciting things that I'm going to touch on here momentarily is we are doing a signalized pedestrian crossing at the new Galvesteau-Zia intersection. This was something we, we've been working really hard to achieve this. The neighbors brought this up a lot as well and we were all for it. And it took a while to devise something that works. And we worked closely with the with the MPO. And we've come up with something that we're really, really excited about. So I do want to touch on the rail corridor study that the city commissioned in 2008. And it talked about the directly addressed future development around this particular site. And it, and in that study, it talks about transit-oriented development or as we're kind of calling ourselves transit-focused development, is it captures the main ideas surrounding the development or redevelopment of urban land adjacent to rail and other transit stops. TOD is a set of coordinated strategies to using cities served by commuter rail through the country, through, excuse me, throughout the country. These strategies can be implemented in diverse ways to enhance existing neighborhoods and create new neighborhood centers. So the design principles that are established is, you know, a mix of land uses, transit connections, complete streets. For example, we have bike lanes, we have sidewalks, we have trail connections. That is what we're talking about. We're talking, we, we, these streets have to support all modes of transportation, trail connections, public spaces, and enhancing existing neighborhoods. And specifically to the Zia Station property, they had, there was essentially a vision statement that said, "The site is developed as a pedestrian-oriented neighborhood center." Buildings would range in character from townhouse and loft residence adjoining existing neighborhoods, which is exactly what we're doing, to three-story mixed-use buildings forming strong streetscapes along Zia Road. I couldn't have said it better if I said it myself. And then there were more land use recommendations for the Zia Station property. Increase maximum height to better accommodate three-story buildings. They should accommodate, TOD site should accommodate a mix of uses that support the surrounding neighborhood. We should have some outdoor community space, outdoor cafe space. And residential uses should predominate along the existing residential to the west, which is exactly how we're treating our site. Create pedestrian-supported environments. Create a coherent pedestrian experience and distribute uses and redesign the street system to alleviate congestion at Z and St. Francis, which is exactly what we're doing. So in looking at the general plan amendment request as well as our rezone request, it's important to assess how we align with the city's general plan themes and guiding policies. Just a snapshot of what we do align with, housing affordability, a compact urban form. This is repeated throughout the general plan that we need to support infill. We need to support somewhat higher densities and support pedestrian-oriented design. There should be a mix of uses in all neighborhoods, not just some neighborhoods, all neighborhoods. There should be a mix of housing types in all neighborhoods. There's nothing in the general plan that says that every, you know, so if every housing, every neighborhood had only one kind of housing type, we'd only have one kind of housing type in the entire city. And I think we've shown that this corridor has developed with a really dynamic diversity of housing options. Talks about transit-supported development and multimodal transportation alternatives, economic diversity, community-oriented development, and sustainability. And then these are, these values are only reinforced by the city's multimodal transit facility report, the rail corridor study that we just touched on, the city's land use and urban design plan from 2017, the city's affordable housing plan, the sustainable Santa Fe plan, and the MPO transportation plan. It's repeated over and over again in every action and policy that the city of Santa Fe has adopted over the last 20 years. So with respect to the South Central Highway Corridor map amendment, a South Central Highway Corridor was created in 1986. That was 35 years ago. God, that makes me feel old. And and as we can see, based on the previous slide, the South Central Highway Corridor no longer aligns with what the city has said or their stated values, especially as it relates to this site. There's no way anyone in 1986 could have anticipated that we would have access to commuter rail in northern New Mexico, much less in Santa Fe and at this particular location. There's a responsible way to develop this property. The South Central Highway Corridor is contrary to the responsible development of this property in a manner that optimizes the city's public and the state's public investment in transit alternatives with respect to the rail runner, the rail trail, and the Santa Fe Trails bus system. However, there are some key elements where we do align with the intent of the South Central Highway Corridor. There's a requirement for a 50-foot setback from St. Francis. We're over 100, we're 110 feet away from St. Francis. They, there's a height limitation of 25 feet. And as I mentioned, the buildings in the north parcel actually read as two-story or 25-foot buildings from St. Francis, really aligning with that intent. There's a density limitation of 21 dwellings per acre. Overall, the gross density that we're proposing here is only 18.8 dwellings per acre. And then on the south parcel, there's a requirement for 35% open space. It actually, we actually have over 42% open space. And overall, the project's providing 40% open space. Another key element of this, there's just a very recent development, is in 2019, this, the governing body amended the Midtown Link District to state that, because they're at the corner of St. Francis and St. Michael's, there's, there are buildings there that are within the link, but also within the highway corridor. So there was a conflict. And so the city decided that the, that the goals of the link were more important in terms of multifamily housing, mixed use, and creating a dynamic connection along the St. Michael's Corridor from the former, the Midtown, from the Midtown Campus all the way to Chris's St. Vincent Hospital. And so the city themselves said, there are values that that over, that kind of overrule what the corridor set to, set to establish. And so we believe that applies here as well. We have a very unique opportunity here to create the kind of community that the city says it desires. Our affordable housing program. We, the city's affordable housing ordinance as it relates to rental product offers kind of a menu of ways that you can comply with the affordable housing program. You can provide 15% of your units onsite would be affordable and that would be priced to be affordable to those making up to 80% of the area median income as established by HUD. And those units have to be preserved as affordable for 10 years. You could do 100% affordable and price your units in accordance with HUD's fair market rents, which is a different, a different metric. Or you can pay a fee in lieu. The, and as we all know, most of the multifamily projects that have been approved or developed in recent years since the adoption of this ordinance have elected to pay the fee in lieu. So we are taking advantage of of the flexibility so we can really attack the affordable housing issue from multiple fronts. So we are providing 10% or 39 affordable units as part of the project for a period of 10 years. However, instead of pricing them at 80% AMI, we are agreeing to the lower rates of the fair market rents established by HUD. And I'm going to talk about why we're doing that because it's, it's important. And then we're also making just under $150,000 cash contribution to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which is a critical fund that supports, you know, it supports vouchers, it supports down payment assistance, it actually supports infrastructure for affordable housing projects. So we really like that we have a multi-pronged approach here. So the problem that we are experiencing, Santa Fe, is that for voucher holders to to be eligible to rent a particular unit, the rent of that unit cannot exceed the fair market rents established by HUD. So if we were to price our units based upon 80% AMI, they wouldn't be accessible to voucher holders. And we believe that's really important to increase the supply of units in our community that voucher holders can access. So our solution is, instead of agreeing to these rents, which is, you know, based upon the current ordinance of 80% AMI, we are agreeing to these rents. We are agreeing to max out our rents at fair market rents established by HUD so we can serve the voucher holders in our community. And you can see that it's, it's not an insignificant, you know, discount. And but we think this is important because that is, that is a big part of the intent of the Santa Fe Homes program. So we, we're really excited about that. And I know Alexandra Ladd is here and she can, I know, could answer questions for you on this particular subject. So access and traffic. Obviously, there are significant concerns about traffic, which we completely respect there because there are currently out there, there are issues. And the intersection at Z and St. Francis does not operate at acceptable levels of service. The intersection fails in the AM and the PM peak hours. When we talk about the AM and the PM peak, we're really talking about rush hour. There's rush hour in the morning, you know, between 7:00 and 9:00 AM. And there's rush hour in the afternoon between 4:00 to 6:00 PM. So we're going to be referring to that a lot. So that's, that's what we mean when we talk about that. The unsignalized intersections that we, that we analyzed do currently operate at acceptable levels of service. So in 2024, if this project is not built, so in a no-build condition, but, you know, three, four years from now, obviously, Z and St. Francis will continue to experience unacceptable failures and increased delays. However, the unsignalized intersections in the study will continue to operate acceptably. In the build condition, after the project is built and after our roadway improvements are constructed, Zia, the levels of service improve to all acceptable levels of service at Z and St. Francis. There are no failing conditions anymore. And the queues, the line of cars waiting at that intersection primarily in the morning, reduce dramatically. And the unsignalized intersections continue to operate acceptably. So these are the intersections that we studied in our traffic study, starting here at Seringo and St. Francis, moving all the way down to Galvesteau and Rodeo here. And just, I know there, there are often concerns about this, but but all of our traffic counts are pre-COVID traffic counts. So all of them were conducted, we did count in September 2019, and then we did the balance of our counts in, in the first week of March. And this was all prior to the March 23rd shutdown. So that, that's, that is an important factor. So our proposed improvements, I'm actually just going to show you the proposed improvements. So this is what we are proposing to do to Galt to Zia Road in order to address these existing traffic conditions. We are primarily, we are taking the current dual left turn here at eastbound on Zia and converting that to a triple left, which dramatically increases the capacity of the number of cars who can move through this intersection on a green light. This is further enhanced by moving Galvestejo fur, oops, sorry, moving Galvestejo further west. So we increase the length of storage we can get for cars approaching this intersection. I already mentioned the, you know, the sidewalk improvements along Zia. We also have a new dedicated right turn lane to go north on Galvestejo. We have a dedicated right turn lane to go south on Galvestejo here. One of the key changes is there, in working with the, we worked very closely with John Romero, who was the city's former Public Works Director and Traffic Engineer, on developing this plan prior to his departure of the city. And left turns either southbound or northbound from Galvestejo on to Zia will be prohibited. It, it is simply not a safe turning movement. It's definitely not a safe turning movement today when Galvestejo is so much closer to St. Francis. So this is really a safety improvement that we are making here. And so we, as you, getting into Galvestejo, you can go right in, you can go right out, but you, and you can also turn left in. Same here heading north, you can go left in, you can go right in, and you can go right out. And what's happening here is, is what I mentioned previously is very exciting. This is a new, what is called a hawk signal. It's a signalized pedestrian crossing. And the design of this, that, this median here that prevents those left turns out actually serves that dual purpose of providing a, what we call is two-stage crossing because it's a wide roadway. So you cross one stage and then, and you press a button and this flashes, and this forces eastbound cars to stop. It's basically a traffic signal for pedestrians. And then this area is the pedestrian refuge where you can stop, you hit another button, and then you can continue on. So this is, this is really critical. This is critical to connecting the, the neighborhoods, our new neighborhood and the existing neighborhood to, to the south side of Zia and into this community and the services that we are offering. So this is a key element, and this is an image that we don't have any of these signals in Santa Fe right now. So this image here shows you kind of what that, what that might look like. So today, in the morning, the, the queue of cars in the worst-case scenario lining up eastbound on Zia to get onto St. Francis is 2,600 feet long. After we do all of the roadway improvements that we are proposing that have been reviewed and approved by the city's traffic engineering consultants, and with all of the traffic to be generated by this project, the worst-case scenario queue goes down to 235 feet. It's a reduction of 91% in the queue length. Similarly, in the PM, the worst-case scenario is 550-foot queue. It's reduced by 65% to 191 feet. And this shows you graphically what the difference looks like. This is the existing queue length that's almost back to the Votec roadway here. And then you can see the blue is the, what the, in the build condition, what the queue would look like. Let's talk about delay, also a significant concern of the neighborhood, which I completely respect. Currently, in the morning, there can be a delay of over four minutes to get through that signal. It's being reduced by 89% to basically 30 seconds with the roadway improvements and with this project built. In the PM, we're 3.7-minute delay at the signal, being reduced to one minute. A 73% reduction. So yes, there are traffic issues at Zia and St. Francis. This project fixes the traffic issues at Zia and St. Francis. So in, there's been, as you saw previously, there have been a lot of interactions with the community. And there were concerns expressed about building height. So as the, as the project has evolved, we have increased the number of two-story buildings. Originally, the plan included four-story buildings, you know, back in 2008, 2009. All those have been eliminated. And making sure that we transition gradually from the existing neighborhood, utilizing two-story buildings in that transitional zone, improving pedestrian safety with improvements on Zia and our new pedestrian crossing, addressing, addressing the traffic issues. And again, with the design incorporating traditional Santa Fe style into the kind of the palette that we are working with at the request of the neighborhood. And also then there is concerns about the Arroyo in the north parcel and some erosion that's happening there. So we are working with the city's watershed division to incorporate some, some Arroyo bank stabilization in, in that area to address those erosion concerns. And just the community outreach started in June of 2003. Multiple E&amp;N meetings leading to the original general plan amendment, and then further discussions, and then discussions put on hold temporarily while the, while the Zia Station was being resolved. And then we circled back in July of 2019. We had a series of three kind of more informal meetings as we were in this kind of revisioning process for the Zia Station property. And, and that was, that all occurred in the second half of 2019. And making adjustments to the plans as we went in, in response to some of the community input we received. And then in October, we had our official E&amp;N meeting for this submittal with a follow-up second E&amp;N meeting to address some specific questions that were issued by the neighborhood. So as you can see, the plan has evolved quite a bit. We've evolved from a project that incorporated four-story buildings to a project that is essentially one, two, and three-story buildings. We've, at, you know, the height originally in 19, we had a much higher residential density that we are proposing, and we've dropped it from 451 units down to 384. We maxed out early on in 2008, we were proposing 330,000 square feet of office. We're now down to 84,000 square feet. Similarly, with retail, at its peak, we were proposing about 72,000 square feet. We're now down to 36,000 square feet. So we feel this project has been, it has been scaled down, and, and we think appropriately so. And, you know, we wanted to, and really enhance the open spaces and the, and the porosity and smaller buildings and all of that connectivity. And so we think where we've landed today is, is really the right kind of critical mass for this site in order to optimize our transit options here. And I did just want to touch on, as, as Lee mentioned, there were some late communications that, that came in that probably did not make it into your packet. We had a, a letter of support from Mr. Jason Fitzpatrick, who lives in the adjacent Candlelight Neighborhood. And he is also a local, a local business owner. And he talks about, you know, space for our local entrepreneurs and the types of, you know, business space and office space and studio space and restaurant space we are providing on a smaller scale that really can support our local businesses. And he says here, he says, "My intention with this letter is informing you that not all Candlelight Neighborhood residents oppose the Zia Station project. As a resident, I believe this project will increase the livability and value of my neighborhood. As a business owner, I'm hopeful for new development opportunities for entrepreneurship in our community. I'm a part of the neighborhood newsletter, so I know you're inundated with opinions. If you would like me to expand on my reasons, I would welcome the opportunity." And then, this is a little, sorry, this was from an email that we received yesterday. Also, a gentleman who lives next door in the Candlelight Neighborhood, he's lived in Santa Fe his whole life and also runs a small business. Says he fully supports the project at the intersection of St. Francis. I think housing is, is going into this area would benefit many of the jobs created at Lantal. Also having the commercial aspect, we positive of the neighborhood and allow small businesses like myself to move in and create jobs in this part of town. Also believe the modifications to the road are needed as the left turning lane is already, is early congested. So that concludes my presentation. Did I make it under an hour?
I think it.
I did, yes. So I really appreciate your attention. I know that's a lot of information, and I am happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. If you'll take off, cheers to you. I'm going to go to Mr. Burke. I know he has something he might want to add.
Thank you, Chair Commissioners. Earlier on in Lee's presentation, he recited to you guys some things about the development plan that I wanted to actually correct. It was actually mistyped. For this, in this, in this scenario, you guys are, as you can see on page two, it says staff recommends approval of the preliminary development plan for case 2020-2901. In this scenario, you guys are actually recommending approval or denial of a preliminary development plan, which is attached to the rezoning case. So you actually are not the deciding body on this. You're just the recommending body. As such, we would want to correct the record and, and report to say that we would be, the commission should recommend approval of the preliminary development plan by the governing body for case 2020-2901, and that's on page two. And then there's nine motions will be required following order for this case. If you go down to the fourth bullet, you would actually want to say that, you would want to, I didn't say, recommend approval or denial of the preliminary development plan for case 2020-2901, subject to conditions of approval and technical corrections recommended by staff. And then also for the findings of fact and conclusions of law. For this case, for case 2901, those would need to be altered, and we would probably need to bring those back to this governing body for adoption in whichever motion they made because you are just the recommending body. And the reason for that is that the C2 PUD, which is a rezoning ordinance, has an exhibit, which is a preliminary development plan. So you actually don't get to make a decision on it. It has to live with the rezoning ordinance. So I just wanted to clarify that, and I apologize for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Commissioners, are there any questions of clarity for Ms. Jenkins before we move on to the public hearing?
I have one. I'd like to ask Ms. Jenkins, the three-story buildings on the south side of the property that border on Zia, those are not set down so that they look like two-story like the north side? Is that correct?
Commissioner Clow, no, to some degree because, you know, Zia, there is a little bit of a slope to Zia there. But no, those are, there will be setbacks as you go up in terms of, you know, the, the second and third story will be smaller footprints. But no, those, just the way the site is graded, those will have more of a three-story appearance from Zia.
And is it possible to grade the site in such a way to make it appear to be two-story like the north side?
Unfortunately, no, because the, the site is, is pretty narrow, you know, between Galvestejo and St. Francis there. So there's really no way to eat up that amount of grade. And then you would end up with a lot of retaining walls, and then that really flies in the face of the pedestrian connectivity. We really want to connect those buildings to the pedestrian amenities along Zia and allow that porosity into the project. So if you start dropping everything and then you have stairs and retaining walls, and it, it just, it doesn't create that inviting environment we're, we're seeking. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Clow. Any other commissioners, questions for Ms. Jenkins, clarity questions? Commissioner Picarello, please.
Yes, so for the streetscape, as far as the complete, the complete street planning for Zia, was it considered to do a multi-use lane that would incorporate bikes and pedestrians rather than separating the bike lane and the sidewalk at that location?
Commissioners, Commissioner Picarello, actually, no. You know, we did have some interaction and did have a review from the MPO. So that was in our review and our discussions with Public Works and the MPO, that option never came up. We're, we're open to that if that is, you know, the wish of the commissioner, the wish of the Public Works Department. We did like the idea of kind of separating the pedestrian from the, from Zia because it's a busy roadway and providing that landscape buffer to really enhance the pedestrian experience so it feels more inviting while providing the, the bike lane on the roadway.
Commissioner Picarello, are you satisfied? Do you have any more questions?
No, I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Satania, clarity questions for Ms. Jenkins?
Yes, Ms. Jenkins, the report in 2008 that describes the intent for the development of this area for the transit, was that ever adopted by the city?
It was a study that was commissioned by the Long Range Planning Division. So I, you know, oftentimes when, when these studies are commissioned, it's really, it's not, it's not like a plan where you have to go through a formal adoption process to incorporate the plan either into the land development code. But it's my understanding that this was a study that was commissioned. But I honestly, I, I can also, I can check with my, with my colleagues and see if that information is available. I can double check, but I don't, I believe this particular study was, was not necessarily formally adopted, but I can confirm that. And I could circle back with you on that later in the presentation if that's helpful.
Great. I have one more question. You mentioned reference to the general plan, and one of the things that we are going to have to look at tonight is whether these meet the criteria that are set out. And the criteria specifically reference for us to look to the general plan. And can you point to specifically where in the general plan that it actually references this particular area? I believe that there is a section of the general plan that does reference overlays, protection overlays, specifically, for example, 599 and the, and the planning that has to go behind that. But is there anywhere that you can specifically reference in the general plan that addresses this particular area and its intent?
Commissioner Satania, I do not believe the general plan gets granular to the point of really speaking to this particular site. We are identified in the general plan as an infill area. So the general plan looks at the city and says, these are the areas that are, were identified not only as an infill area, but as a primary growth area. So that is, that, that, that is how this, but I, to my knowledge, the general plan does not get really specific about this particular location.
Okay, I wanted to check because it does make a specific reference to other overlay projects.
Look at that. We can pull that up and ta, and take a look at that.
Sure. And I think that has, I think that's good for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Satania. Any other commissioners on clarity questions before we get into the public comment?
Okay, I see none. And before we get into the public comment, if you'll just indulge me for a minute, we're speaking with staff, and as a new chair, I've decided that we can give homeowners associations and neighborhoods a little more time. In doing this, we've decided the best way to do it is if a homeowners association or neighborhood association wants to talk, they'll have to yield time from someone else in their association. And that 10 minutes would be the max, so they would need four people to yield. We have 17 hands up, and so it makes it a little tough right now. But I'm wondering if anyone out there is a president of association and wants to, to speak for that association.
Here, I'm observing that we have like 20, 28 hands raised right now among our attendees. And I, I think hopefully, they may be trying to line up, so I'm not sure how to recommend. 32 now, how to approach this? It, it may be easier to go down the list and if somebody's yielding time or speaking on behalf of a neighborhood association, sort of refer them a little later. Perhaps like kind of work through folks that are speaking as individuals. And then if we get to folks that want to Perhaps like kind of work through folks that are speaking as individuals. And then if we get to folks that want to do yielding or speak for an association.
Is it able to turn up, turn on the comments to see if anyone types in or the, and then turn them off? Or is that not doable?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, that's not doable. When you set up the function, you actually set up the chat function as well as the Q and A function. And we turn those off for these meetings. So, we can't do that.
Okay.
So, here, Mr. Chair, I can add in, my last communication with Ed Akku Oppenheimer of the Candlelight Association was that they had decided not to cede their time to one speaker that individuals did want to speak. So, that, that was my last email with him on the topic. So.
That's fine. I'm, I'm just, all associations. I just want to be inclusive, not just this one. So, what we'll do, Sally, that's a great idea. If somebody's going to be speaking for an association, we will need somebody else to yield time if they need more than two minutes. But we have 35 people with their hands up as of now. We made time that everybody can speak. We asked that if it's something that's been said, to take that into account and to please be concise. Everybody's given two minutes to speak. And with that, we'll open up the public hearing.
Thank you, Chair. The first speaker with the hand raised is Ed Akku Oppenheimer from the Candlelight Neighborhood Association. Ahead of this meeting, he did request that each one of his members is able to speak in their order. So, I do have the list. So, Ed would be the first speaker, then Barbara Levin, and then Cheryl, Rick, Alan, Nathan, Margaret, and Antoinette, and they all have their hands up. So, if the chair's okay with that, since Ed is the first person with his hand up, I'd like to go in that order because I think they prepared their speeches in an order that, is that okay with the chair and the commissioners?
It's fine with me. Is it okay with the commission? Any objections? I'm seeing heads waving yes. So, let's begin. Thank you.
Okay. And I just want to add that I will be doing the two-minute time clock, but it's a little bit of an inartful process. So, I'll try to make it audible, but I'll also politely interrupt you if you hit your two minutes. So.
Yes, please. Thank you, Sally. Once you, once you get the two minutes, please finish up your sentence, not a paragraph. Thank you so much.
Okay. Chair, the first speaker is Ed from the Candlelight Neighborhood Association. Ed, go ahead and unmute yourself. You'll be sworn in and you'll be given two minutes to speak. Thank you.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ed Akku Oppenheimer. I live at 2129 Candlelaro Street, and I am Vice President of the Candlelight Neighborhood Association. On December 15th, the CNA Board asked the Planning Office staff, if everything in the Zia Station preliminary filing were approved, what would be left to ask for in a future refiling that might gain the developer something more? Neither Mr. Burke nor Mr. Logstern could suggest a single possible additional variance or exemption that might be useful. It's all being asked for tonight in this set of requests. The Zia Station proposal claims that all of the guidelines for development that have been created cooperatively by planners, regulators, legislators, and citizen input to ensure safer, more balanced development are flawed. That the filing argues that the general plan is wrong, that the zoning is wrong, that the South Central Highway Corridor protections are unnecessary for this property, and that the Zia Station should be developed in phases without a master plan at the developer's discretion, with refilings, of course. Candlelight thinks planners, regulators, and legislators have done a better job than that. And for this reason, 96.8% of our voting members are signatories to the CNA position statement in the packet, exactly as it stands. The statement explains why none of the changes sought tonight should be approved, and it asks the developer to offer at least one alternative proposal that would not require the city to exclude the property from the South Central Highway Protection Corridor, a request that has never been granted. The link situation is different and requires more time to deal with. CNA supports the Zia Station proposal under current restrictions. We support it. If those protections are altered at the whim of the developer, the entire city will have to deal with the consequences of having built a C2 PUD maximum density project at this problematic intersection. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ed.
Chair, the next speaker is gonna be Barbara. I'm trying to find her. Oh, there she is. Barbara, I'm gonna go ahead and allow you to speak. Please unmute yourself and you'll be sworn in.
Thank you. I'm here.
Thank you. Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Barbara Levin at 2200 Arder Street and former president of the Candlelight Neighborhood Association.
Thank you.
The developer submitted City County Council Resolution 2004-4 to support their application. This resolution states the city council's intent at that time. I draw your attention to the last whereas, and particularly the phrase harmonious development along the north and south side of Zia Road and Galistao Road and the Southern Santa Fe Railway that must, that would not have adverse impacts upon the surrounding neighborhood. In Exhibit A to this resolution, show the open space to low-density residential on both the north and the south side of Zia. Most of us do not oppose low-density residential development on these lands, but we do oppose the outrageous overbuilding that will result along with multiple traffic safety and health issues that would surely have adverse impacts upon our surrounding neighborhood. I was present at the 200, 2009 Planning Commission meeting where the rail corridor plan was downgraded to a study after our critique of it. It was never approved by the Planning Commission. While your staff cited it as a study in the first reference and makes an obscure note that it was never approved, it appears in its entirety as an addendum and is referenced in all the findings of fact as a plan. We respectfully request that all references to this document be removed from both the findings of fact and addendum since it has absolutely no relevance to the requested development. In 2013, in our neighborhoods, received a letter from Mayor David Cost, which stated in part, I quote, "In speaking with staff, the future land use map currently designates mixed use adjoining the rail stop at the south side of Zia Road and residential three to seven units per acre on the vacant privately owned land north and south on Zia Road." Mr. Liming stated to me that the map he showed you does not recommend nor imply changing either of these designations.
In addition. That is two minutes, please.
I, I, I have my husband. He seated just a couple more, just a few more.
Wait, wait a minute, Ms. Levin. Who is your husband?
Michael.
Michael Levin.
Michael Levin.
Okay, do you, Mr. Burke, if you'll, we'll let him see, just make sure you take him off after. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Levin.
Okay. In addition, it appears that rezoning may be necessary even to achieve these designations, the end of quote. This letter also illustrates the historic intent by city officials toward these lots. This is 2013. The developers have proven false reasons for requesting a waiver of the Central Highway Protection District. While the neighborhood's physical environment has changed very little, we have lived through a year of COVID-19 isolation and numerous lifestyle changes. There is a greater need now for single-family homes since there are more working and, working and being home-schooled from home. And there's a need to isolate within the home if infected. So, during the majority of the 43 years we have lived in this neighborhood, the best in this area as reflected by Santa Fe City plans has been low-density, single-family homes. And this designation is the most appropriate to complement our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara and Michael. Go ahead, Mr. Burke.
Thank you, Chair. The next speaker is gonna be Cheryl. Cheryl, I'm gonna go ahead and allow you to talk. Please unmute yourself. And you will be sworn in first and you'll be given two minutes.
Okay. Do you, hi, do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Cheryl Gardape. I live at 1880 Briante Lane in the Candlelight Neighborhood, and I am a board member of the Candlelight Neighborhood Association.
Thank you.
Both the developers and city planners have presented a carefully distorted interpretation of the South Central Highway Corridor Protection District Plan. They will have you believe all the way through the document in the package you have that the plan has been compromised repeatedly, is antiquated, not considered really valid any longer. They suggest that Zia intersection was already included in the height adjustment made for a project at St. Michael's intersection. This is complete fabrication presented as truth. The entire proposal depends on your believing these distortions. In fact, there is not yet a development within any of the corridor protection areas of this city that has been allowed to proceed with the request to remove land from the corridor. As recently as 2019, a sign was disallowed at the Rodeo Road intersection because it violated the provisions of the corridor protections. They are asking you for an extreme exemption to a major city ordinance using words that make it appear to be a small shift. Merritt Brown bought the land knowing it lies within the protected area. The provisions of the corridor were developed over years with hundreds of citizens, city officials, professionals, and businesses with careful consideration. The first document is 27 pages. The second is 217 pages from 2004. There are others. As recently as 2017, under Mayor Gonzalez, the City Urban Land Use Committee reaffirmed the entire Corridor Protection District as part of the general plan. There have been multiple public hearings over a 15-year period. Please do not destroy a plan that has been only added to and refined with each review to protect all the entryways into our city as well as protecting our neighborhoods from density degradation. Please do not be fooled by this collaboration of city officials and developers who are finding our protections to be an inconvenience. Our multiple requests to the developers for a plan that complies with the current protections have gone unanswered. We were told simply, change is hard. We are not anti-development. We are.
I apologize for interrupting.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Chair, the next speaker is gonna be Mr. Richard Wood. Richard, go ahead and unmute yourself and you'll be sworn in and you'll be given two minutes to speak. Thank you.
I'm here.
Thank you. Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. My name is Richard. I'm Richard Wood. I lived at 2197 Lustray Court in the Candlelight Neighborhood. I'm a retired mechanical engineer with over 25 years of firsthand experience on the subject roadways. My detailed traffic analysis is contained in your packet. I can't possibly cover all of the issues in here. Although the revised traffic plan presented here today does address a few of the easier issues I raised, it completely ignores the difficult and inconvenient ones. I encourage you to study my full report for, for more details. I'll try and cover a few of them. First one is, I want to correct one thing that Jennifer said. They did address the failure of the roadway for all the traffic coming off of Zia going on to St. Francis, but they did not do anything to help the traffic that comes off of St. Francis going on to Zia. It continues to be a failure there and it's surreal. All right. I cannot stress enough that a responsible engineering approach would include a roadway master plan addressing all the known problems of this intersection and roadway. You must ensure that this builder, what this builder builds now will not preclude needed improvements later. In particular, I want to make sure that there's enough room left so that eventually if the city so decides to put in a continuous right turn lane coming off of St. Francis onto Zia, that there's room there. If they build up too close to Zia, you won't be allowed to do that. I also believe that New Mexico state law requires that a review of projects that impact the state highway. That was not done. The proposed prohibition of left turns on Galistao seems arbitrary. Was this a path of least resistance rather than a choice for what is best for Santa Fe, our neighborhood, and in fact, their own tenants? What alternatives were considered? I offer several alternatives in my report. Does a developer really believe that the herd of 24-hour-a-day U-turns that this left turn prohibition will cause at Candlelaro on the, to the west and in the Walgreens parking lot to the east across St. Francis are safer for drivers, pedestrians, and bicycles than the prohibited left turns? Note that eliminating the left turns allows the relocated Galistao to be much narrower than the existing roadway that they're giving up, a net gain for the developer.
Richard, we are over the two minutes here. I don't know if the timer is not audible. It's very loud where I am. Sorry.
Thank you, Richard.
Chair Commissioners, the next speaker is gonna be Allen Richardson. Hi, Allen. Go ahead and unmute yourself and you'll be sworn in and then be given two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Allen Richardson. My address is 2203 Briante Street.
Thank you.
My, my comments are gonna relate primarily to safety issues and a very narrow view of the project's impact. As you know, providing for public safety is a primary responsibility of city government. Limited time only allows me to mention a few safety issues along a half-mile strip of Zia Road between Votec Road and Galistao, including an average daily traffic count of 17,100 vehicles, seven intersecting residential roads, no crosswalks, no stop signs or stoplights, a posted speed limit of 35 miles an hour while the average speed is 45 miles an hour, restricted use for vehicles, pedestrians, and bicyclists, periodic ice-covered hill at Galistao during the winter causing traffic to back up past Briante Street. By removing the South Central Highway Protection Corridor and changing existing zoning to move the proposal forward, the following safety issues will be added. An increase in traffic volume of 7,900 vehicles per day or over 40%. Multiple U-turns and stra, and restricted turns. No safety measures for bicyclists or pedestrians beyond the Zia and St. Francis area. Ice-covered sidewalks during the winter along the south side of Zia Road after Phase Two of the development is completed. A limited traffic study was completed that included a small portion of Zia Road. The study identified issues at Galistao and Candlelaro Streets. All other intersections with residential streets were excluded, including Vella adjacent to Candlelara. No speed study was conducted. A comprehensive traffic safety study with a broader scope of work and input from the neighborhood should be completed. The identified issues need to be addressed prior to the proposal moving forward. Please do what needs to be done to ensure public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Allen.
All right. Chair, the next speaker is gonna be Nathan Thomas. And I have to find him. Okay, Nathan, go ahead and unmute yourself and you'll be sworn in and be given two minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hello.
Hi, do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Nathan Thomas. I live at 2194 Lustray Court. Mr. Chairman, Commission Members, thank you for this opportunity. I am the Candlelight Neighborhood President. I agree with all the previous points brought against the size and scope of this proposal. Neighborhood surveys have shown that 96% of CNA neighbors are against this size as well, yet 87% of the neighborhood would welcome R5 to R7 development. And in conversations, most residents would welcome totally, would welcome locally-owned restaurants around the Zia Station. As testified, in 1986, the city codified the South Central Highway Corridor and then reaffirmed it again in 1999 and 2017. Not only has this shaped St. Francis into the success of existing neighborhoods that it is, but every developer has adhered to that ordinance until now with this ask for special treatment to gerrymander the properties out. In doing so, it opens these properties to the proposal of 245,000 square foot of total roof area. In reference, the Chavez Centers is only 177,000. And if you consider the habitable square footage estimated at 479,000 foot, this proposal will exceed the 320,000 square foot of the divi- will exceed the 320,000 square foot of the D'Argus Mall. With a transit-by-automobile focus, this brings a 40% and greater increase of daily traffic count. The developer is having to build parking garages that equal the spacing of the city's downtown parking garage on San Francisco Street. I ask, how could this escalated C2 proposal be highest and best for an existing R7 neighborhood? Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan.
Chair, the next speaker is going to be Margaret Marshall. Margaret, go ahead and unmute yourself, and then please be sworn in, and your two minutes will begin.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Yes. Sorry.
Please state your name and address for the record.
I hope I'm- letting that echo.
We may need you to turn off an additional device if you have more than one phone or computer going.
Or if you're watching it on YouTube, you might want to mute the YouTube.
Okay, let me, let's try this. The answer to being sworn in is yes. Can you hear me?
Yeah, you sound great. Please proceed with your name and address, and then I'll start you.
Let me turn this one off.
Yes.
Okay. Wait, wait. Let me turn yours back up.
Noah, can Margaret use my computer? This is Akku.
So, Akku, are you in the same room as Margaret? I think we're having technical difficulties again.
Margaret, you sounded real good a minute ago when you confirmed that you said yes. Whatever you were doing right then was working.
Noah, is Margaret part of the lineup that wanted to speak, or are we done with that?
Margaret's the second-to-last person to speak.
Okay. Let's go to the last person and see if Margaret can get it together to come back on with us, please.
All right. The next person is going to be Antoinette, and I have to, oh, there she is. Antoinette, I'm going to go ahead and allow you to speak. Please unmute yourself, and then you'll be sworn in and given two minutes.
Do you swear, you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Antoinette Shook, and I live at 2120 Condolete Street. Ready? I'm the Secretary for the Candlelight Neighborhood Association. We have had several meetings with Jenkins-Gavin and the Planning Commission on the part of Candlelight Neighborhood Association, with a mind of developing a plan to keep in line with the established Candlelight Neighborhood. One of our discussions have been in regard to affordable housing. The initial plan for affordable housing units was 15% of units for five years. The developers have now changed the rental proposal to be 10% of the units for 10 years. Was this legal to change after their submittal package was sent out to the public? Plus, this is not a true following of affordable housing program because they will be paying a fee in lieu, which is not true to affordable housing. With the unexpected COVID-19 pandemic, this has left families stuck at home. There has been an outcry for greater need for space. It's due to minimal living space and no yards. We have been given the narrative of a housing shortage, so the developer decides more apartments. Jenkins-Gavin's talk of continuity of the established Candlelight Neighborhood on the north and south side of Zia. This is currently a single-family homes, currently single-family homes, and Jenkins-Gavin's proposal is several rows of two-story houses abolishing the mountain views and privacies for myself and others who are backed up to this proposed development with two- and three-story apartment buildings. This is not continuity. The current land use designation is low density of three to seven houses per acre. This would keep in continuity with the current neighborhood. I humbly ask that you and that the Chair and Planning Commission have dignity and discernment in regard to not bringing hardship to this intersection and neighborhood. And I agree not to remove the Highway Corridor Protection Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Antoinette. And just for clarity, I think you said that you met with the Planning Commission, but you probably meant staff and planners from the city of Santa Fe because this is the first time it's come up in front of us. Go ahead, Mr. Burke.
I do not see Margaret Marshall on this list of hands raised. Margaret, do you want to try raising your hand again, or?
Mr. Burke, you may want to try Akku also. It sounded like maybe he was there with a different machine.
I don't see Akku either.
Let's keep going since she already fell out of order, and she's probably watching on YouTube. She can get back on. Anybody else?
I do see her. It's Margaret Marshall, right? She's the bottom hand for me, Mr. Burke. I don't know if you see her down there.
Oh, yeah, there she is.
Try it with your hand.
All right, Margaret, do you want to unmute yourself and then be sworn in?
Yes.
And you have two minutes to speak. Thank you.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Margaret Marshall, 2172 Ojo Court, and I am a Candlelight Neighborhood Association Board Member, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak. So first of all, speaking both for myself and on behalf of a large segment of the neighborhood, I want to add my voice to the others that have already spoken and insist that for the sake of the entire community of Santa Fe, that we keep the corridor protections in place. I note that Ms. Jenkins thinks that this is a great project and very exciting. However, this is not the sentiment of our neighborhood overall. I note that in the packet for this meeting, leading the comments that were submitted, there is an 11-page overall endorsement of the Zia Station proposed project granted, including a few minor suggestions for changes. But I want the Commissioners to recognize clearly that endorsement by a few individuals, and including the several whose comments Jennifer Jenkins put up on the screen, do not represent the overall sentiment of the Candlelight Neighborhood. Those who have weighed in do oppose this project as it has been proposed, even with several of the modifications that Ms. Jenkins presented this evening. The density is untenable, the requested levels of variances and rezoning is just unacceptable. Since I've been attending these meetings, starting in July of 2019 and up to the present, the neighborhood basically has expressed loudly and clearly that they do not want this density in the neighborhood, or adjacent to the neighborhood, I should say. And this has been reinforced with emails, with informal discussions, with surveys. It is not a project that the neighborhood wants, and we're the people who live here. It's not the Planning Commission who lives here. It's not the people in apartment-
Thank you, Margaret.
All right, Chair. Now that we've finished with Candlelight Neighborhood Association's official order speakers, we're on to, the next speaker is going to be Deanna. Deanna, go ahead and unmute yourself. You'll be sworn in first, and you'll be given two minutes to speak. Thank you.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Hello?
Deanna, I see you're unmuted. Is your audio connected correctly for your microphone?
Can you hear me now? Can you turn yours on? Sorry, there's two computers going. Hold on a sec. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes. Sounds good.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Can they hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry. Deanna Einspar, 725 Messia Road, Santa Fe 87501. The point I wanted to make was my concern with how the St. Francis Corridor Protection District was first implemented with lots of planning meetings and input from the public and committee hearings, and now we're proposing to basically ditch it just on the whim of an application before the Planning Commission. And I just don't think that that's very good governance. It's not only the developer and the neighbors that should be concerned about this area. It's how, it's how people see Santa Fe when they first come into town, and our citizens and officials and interested parties express a lot of concern about that and care about how our city looks when we first come into town. And I think that it's unwise and really just terrible governance to bypass the input of all the citizens of Santa Fe in order to change this just because it's kind of inconvenient for, for a developer to have to satisfy those requirements. And the other, the only other point I wanted to make was I think the Planning Commission should make a, make a point to try to discover whether this development and whether city staff have advised the developer properly in terms of what is required because St. Francis is a state highway, excuse me, a state highway. And I think that they have not done their due diligence, and I think that the Planning Commission really needs to do their due diligence. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Deanna. Mr. Burke, I see that there's three telephone call-in listeners, and I don't know if they want to speak or not, but if you'll tell them what to dial if they do want to speak, that way, if they, once they've spoken, they may want to watch on YouTube or another way.
Thank you, Chair. If, if you're calling in and listening to this meeting from your mobile device, you can press star nine to raise your hand if you'd like to speak, and that will come up, and we won't repeat your phone number on the record. We'll just go ahead and read out the first few digits for privacy. So if you'd like to speak on this issue and you're calling in, please press star nine now.
And I do see one phone number with a hand raised. I don't know if the chair wanted to go to them first in case they wanted to switch over to the YouTube viewing.
I think that'd be a good idea if we can get the telephone to speak next.
Okay. If you're calling in from the number, from a 78, a 505-780 number, please unmute yourself, and you'll be sworn in and allowed to speak for two minutes.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ms. RG Wakeland, 2305 Cali Luminoso, Santa Fe, New Mexico.
Thank you. You can talk.
Okay. Excepting for the purposes of argument without admitting, all developers' facts and conclusions are true, none of these five cases can be approved. This is because they all rely on the repositioning of Galistao Road to solve the increase in traffic problems. However, developers do not request moving the road. Instead, they simply state they hope the road will be moved after five cases are approved via a separate, separate request to the city under Section 231.2 Vacation. City cannot issue hypothetical or contingent changes to the general plan or contingent and hypothetical changes to the city code. Likewise, developers' lot-line adjustment plan would not cause the vacation or movement of Galistao Road. Additionally, Section 2312 applies only if, quote, "there are reversionary rights in the grantors." No such rights exist because the city owns Galistao Road property via a 1980 plat map which reserved no reversionary rights. County Records 461337338, Book 82, Page 15, which states, "Owners and proprietors do hereby dedicate to the public for its use forever." The streets herein shown. Neither would approval of all five cases qualify Galistao Road for vacating under State Statute Section 67, 26, and 7. This requires non-use of the road or the road being a hazard to public health. Therefore, approval of these five cases is impossible.
Thank you, RG.
All right. Let's see if we have any other call-ins. Looks like RG's trying to raise her hand again. So, RG, everybody gets to speak once, just for clarification purposes. So are we ready? I don't see any other phone number hands raised. Would we like to go to the next speaker?
Yes, let's go to the next speaker, and if you do see a phone hand raised, we'll go to them, but keep with the online. Thank you.
Eric Wolf. Eric, go ahead and unmute yourself. You'll be sworn in, and then you'll be given two minutes to speak.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Eric Wolf. I live at 2959 Viaje Pavo Real, Santa Fe 87505. I've lived in Santa Fe for over 37 years. I currently live in the Villa Caballero neighborhood, two miles from the intersection of Zia and St. Francis. The proposed development is not in my backyard, though I and my hundreds of neighbors drive through that intersection most days of the week, usually two or more times, at the risk of our lives when drivers race to get through the intersection at over 50 miles an hour. There are a number of safety concerns in that area already, and the proposed development will make them worse, increasing the liability of the city for future deaths and injuries. The opening of Zia Station was delayed over and over due to safety issues and usage concerns, which still have not been fully addressed. Fatal accidents have occurred at the crossing, and more are likely to occur as a result of this development. I support the comments of the other speakers. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Eric.
Next speaker is Michael Margolis. Michael, go ahead and unmute yourself, and you'll be sworn in and given two minutes. Thanks.
Good evening.
Hi. Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Michael Margolis. I'm a resident at 2154 Candelaro Street in Santa Fe. We live here in Santa Fe, okay. We live here in Santa Fe in a complex urban ecosystem involving both natural and human components. The word ecosystem comes from the root word eco, meaning house or household. We can agree that we must strive for a harmony and balance with all of the ecological components of our home we call Santa Fe. I have owned a house in the Candlelight Neighborhood for almost 30 years. Now surely SF Brown and his agents and the Planning Commission know that ownership is really just an illusion in the bigger picture. We are at best custodians of the land, deed it in our name. Good custodians honor, protect, and respect the views and feelings of their close land neighbors who share this ecosystem. I am one of at least 60 people here in our neighborhood that have not been really listened to or respected concerning this proposal of a monstrously out-of-proportion high-density development adjacent to our quiet little neighborhood. We are asking for you to reconsider and deny both your approval of this rezoning proposal as well as your approval of the removal of the land from the South Highway Protective Corridor. This protective corridor ordinance specifically states it is to be in place, and I quote, "as the area around it develops." It is not contingent on any development, including the Zia railrunner stop. stop. I feel that we all need to understand that we do not really ever own the land. It is the land that owns us. Just visit our neighbors at Memorial Gardens if you need a reminder for that. It might be good for your soul. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Mara Harris, you're next. Please unmute yourself, and you'll be given, you'll be sworn in and then given two minutes to speak. Thank you.
Great, I'm here.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Mara Christian Harris. I live at 2185 Candelaro Street.
Thank you.
And preparing my remarks for tonight, now, um, I went to Strong, um, Strongtowns.org, and one of their, they advocate for planning that makes cities stronger and more financially resilient. And one of their tenants is that no neighborhood should experience radical change and no neighborhood should be exempt from change. And I'm here to assert that, yes, we have a responsibility as residents to be open to change, but I think that as planned, um, I think this development is far too dense. I think that it has manifested, I think that it, it creates radical change for our neighborhood, manifested by density, height, traffic, safety, and many other issues that have been identified here. I think it's, um, our challenge to come to, yes, to find a way that we can work together. I think none of us, most of us, I think, understand that some development needs to happen, but I think that it, the density of this particular development creates an awful lot of change for, um, for this neighborhood. I would ask the Planning Commission to please look into traffic particularly, specifically how traffic from Galistao, from the north side of Galistao that has to go right, that is to say west, how they're going to get turned around so that they can go northeast or south on St. Francis. And I would also ask, what is the actual height of the story, of the three-story buildings on the north side? It reads as second story, I was told, but I had not been told what the actual height of it is. I recognize that, um, some people are opposed outright to this. I also recognize that the winds of change are, are strong, and something is going to be built there. How do we, as a group, together work to make this work? Thank you.
Thank you, Mara.
Looks like, uh, the next speaker is Tiago. Tiago, I'm going to allow you to speak. Please unmute yourself, and then you'll be sworn in, and your two minutes will begin.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Tiago Ahiz. I live in 1907 Caii Micaela. That's the south side of the whole project there, Candlelight Neighborhood. Now Jennifer seems like a great person, very competent. The project, beautiful. I can see how people would get excited with it. But I wanted to give the Planning Commission and the audience here a little sense of what it means to live here. I moved, I bought a house with my wife and two kids, little kids, you know, because we wanted a feel of the southwest. We moved to Santa Fe to experience the city different, to live away from the busyness, the traffic, the stress, so that we can have some mountain views, a little peace. I take my kids frequently to the rail trail to look at the mountains, watch the sunset. And as I think about this project here, I grieve that we're going to lose some of these things that, that brought us here in the first place. I mean, we're talking about high-density projects, we're talking about a bunch of 400 places for people. I mean, it's just unbelievable. And again, every single drawing I saw on the screen today eclipses mountains in the back. So, I mean, the question truly here that I have is, I mean, what is the philosophy here of, of the government, of the city in regards to the possibility of an approval of something like this when it jeopardizes completely what the city assumes stands for, what it represents to people moving in? So to me, it's, it's really embarrassing how easy it is to even discuss the possibility of such an approval for a project like this since it goes against the nature of the city and why people move here. So my question is really a question of philosophy. Is it money? Is it, I mean, what is at stake here to move forward with this? Because obviously, it's not the stewardship of the land. It's not a sense of the culture that we have here. Now, I understand that there is a need for businesses, for people to put their, you know, jobs out into the public, and we have places like the Midtown Project area that is still non-developed. It's abandoned where this project would work great over there, but not jeopardizing the views, the landscape of what we have here.
Thank you, Tiago.
Chair, the next speaker is Nicole. Nicole, go ahead and unmute yourself. You'll be sworn in, and then your two minutes will begin.
I respectfully request that my husband also be allowed to speak, and I would like him to speak first, if that's acceptable, and then I would follow him. We'll stick to the two-minute rule.
Each.
Each. Each.
Sure, we can swear you in together, um, if that's all right.
Absolutely.
Okay. Do you both swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
I do.
Thank you. So when you each speak, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Delbert Khan II. I live at 2635 Villa Caballero Del Norte in Santa Fe, New Mexico, 87505. My point is, we do need housing in Santa Fe, but I don't think that we need all this rental housing. So instead of all the one-bedroom apartments, perhaps they can build two-bedroom apartments and fewer of them for this piece of property. We already have a lot of apartments and residences going up in Governor Miles Road, Sila Road, and other places. And so I don't think that it's necessary that we pack this, this piece of property with apartments. We need to pack it with people that are living in their own homes, not rentals. And I have a lot of questions since watching this about all the parking that's going to be there.
Okay. I, I listened, oh, I'm Nicole Khan. I live at 2635 Villa Caballero in Santa Fe. I listened very carefully to what Mr. Roach had to say in the previous discussion about water resources. And I believe that if we are truly trying to attract, trying to develop more affordable housing, then that's where our water resources should be going, not to 10% of the housing units, but more like 50 or 75%. And I understand that the developer, the property owner, has been sitting on this land for 20 years, and he wants to make the best use of it possible, to make as much money for himself as possible. But our goal is more affordable housing. And I'll also note that traffic, this intersection at Zia and San, and, uh, St. Francis is one block south of where we have the most accidents in the city of Santa Fe. That's anecdotal from firemen who are going to the scene of the accidents. So why would we have a three-lane road spinning into St. Francis? Wouldn't that just move our, our terrible problem closer? So those are the points I'd like to make, and thank you for listening.
Nicole and Delbert, thank you both.
Chair, it looks like, uh, Lynn is next. Lynn, go ahead and unmute yourself. You'll be sworn in, and then your two minutes will begin.
Hi.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Lynn Kelly. I live at, I own my house at 1932 Caii Micaela here in Santa Fe in the Candlelight District. Others have spoken to traffic and specific problems. However, um, I am generally a pedestrian, and I wish to speak to a couple of other concerns. One of them is the important pedestrian and bike path called the rail trail. It's heavily used from downtown, um, unbroken all the way to Lamy. It's on both sides of Zia, and if this project goes through, there, there should be no impediment to bike or foot traffic at any time, even during construction. Walls should be built, or fences should be built between the apartments and buildings and the path. No construction materials left along the path, as is the case in the recently built Broadgate Rodeo Complex. There's all kinds of construction materials right along the rail trail. Tenants should also not consider the path their personal dog latrine, as has also happened in the rodeo complex. If stores are built on, uh, the south side of Zia, there should be no congregating or gathering along the path. Accidents are bound to happen. People zip through there on their bikes, and I just hate to see pedestrians run down. If granted, this company must provide trash cans and recycling cans for the increased amount of litter that there will be, especially on the south side. Also, increased traffic from density will make the red arrow for the right-hand turn onto Zia even more dangerous than it already is. Pedestrians, bicycles, dog walkers, myself among them, have almost been harmed or killed.
It was time, right? Did I hear time? Okay. I was just making sure I didn't hear the time kind of thing. I was just making sure.
Yeah, I apologize. I've got my phone timer turned up so loud, but I apologize for my rude interruptions.
Sorry about that. Okay. Next speaker is Rick Martinez. Rick, uh, go ahead and unmute yourself. You'll be sworn in, and then you'll be given two minutes to speak.
Thank you.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
That's Rick Martinez, 725 Macia Road. And, uh, I want to respond to the staff report that claims there was a big mistake in the original zoning, and there have been changes in the surrounding, surrounding area altering the character of the neighborhood to such extent to justify a zoning change. Staff said that since the mid-'80s development intensity has moved further south along the St. Francis Drive corridor, we increased with commercial and housing density. He also states several, several times that the character of St. Francis Drive has changed over time. Multiple family homes is plentiful in the southern St. Francis Corridor, especially on the east side, but yet along St. Francis Drive, no one has asked to be removed or, or been granted to remove from the southwest corridor, uh, traffic corridor change. I also like to point out the misconception that the Midtown Link is somehow connected to this development. In the 19, in the 2019 amendments where the city allowed the Midtown Link overlay provisions to supersede the south-central overlay, there were three buildings placed along the south-southern Annapocheco Street in the Midtown Link. They never, they were never taken out of the, of the south St. Francis Drive corridor in their final approval. There were many public meetings that created the Midtown Link. That's why it was done, and it was not, had nothing to do with this development. I want to add that we are being deceived, the fact that there was no certified topographical maps, grading plan, slope analysis in this packet. And, and the developer states that the north partial on St. Francis, Street Francis Drive will be graded so that only half the, only one and a half stories be visible from St. Francis, but never talks about the south, which is taller, higher in elevation than the north part partial. With the south partial only being conceptual plan, they can always come back to the Planning Commission and ask for four stories, since the parcels would be already removed from the southwest, south-central corridor. So that's very harsh.
Thank you, Rick.
Chair, I think the next speaker is Nat, and, uh, I'm going to go ahead and let you unmute yourself, and then you'll be sworn in again, and you can speak.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Nat Dean, PO Box 1888, Santa Fe. I, I will, uh, try to not repeat what has already been said. Thank you for hearing testimony tonight. There have been many references to another plaza. There have been many plazas in developer plans that have failed, examples being Aldea, South Side, and so on. $150,000 for housing affordability is penny candy. Traffic is consistently deadly at this intersection. Lights do not, as the developer said, quote, "force," unquote, vehicles to stop. Unfortunately, bodies do not either. There is no mention of Pacifica, a memory care and assisted living facility, which does not monitor its residents in assisted living as they stroll about the building, outside of the building. Also, Los Alamos is not served by the rail runner at this point in time and was one of the focal points of the developer as residents. Thank you very much for your time, commissioners and staff.
Thank you, Nat.
Chair, the next speaker is, uh, Mr. Anthony Guida. Anthony, you're gonna unmute yourself, and then you'll be sworn in and given two minutes to speak. Anthony, you need to unmute yourself?
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Anthony Guida, president of nonprofit Friends of Architecture Santa Fe, 1711 Second Street, 87505.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. Uh, I just wanted, uh, maybe approach this a different way. We're in the middle of a climate crisis, a global climate crisis. Building, construction, and energy use alone are responsible for 40% of the global greenhouse gas emissions that cause climate change. Transportation is another 25%. How we design our built environment is literally a matter of life and death for the planet. Locally, it's also a matter of addressing a profound inequity and shortage in housing for a growing population. As an architect advocating for the environment and greater equity is inseparable from my professional commitment to public health, safety, and welfare. Change is hard, but density is good. What is being proposed is not overscaled and certainly not in this context. Transit-oriented and multimodal development, denser urban infill of existing sites and urban infrastructure, mixed uses and complete streets are all planning strategies that dramatically reduce carbon emissions. Planet and Santa Fe can no longer afford to maintain or continue low-density auto-centric 20th century patterns of development, especially single-family zoning. These things only make housing less affordable, less equitable, and horrifically unsustainable. Reducing density in response to fear of increased car traffic, by the way, why are we protecting an automobile highway, uh, only puts us further away from the types of density that make walkability and lower carbon development attainable. I support this development and ones like it for our community. I only wish that they were greater in density and with more affordable units, that they had less parking and more green space, and were built to a standard of net-zero energy and water to further benefit the positive environmental impact. I urge the commission to vote in favor of density. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony.
Chair, the next speaker is William Kessler. William, go ahead and unmute yourself. You'll be sworn in, and then your two minutes will begin.
Hi.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is William Kessler. I live at 356, uh, West Zia Road, uh, Santa Fe, New Mexico, 87505. So I live, um, in the area that's going to be impacted by this project, um, east of St. Francis Road with my wife and two kids. And I want to, um, comment in favor of this development and associated changes. I believe that, uh, higher density infill makes sense of this location. Because utilities are close by, the, um, development is close to the train and rail trail and roadways. It's also close to, um, uh, a couple of schools, Chaparral and Santa Fe High. Uh, I think that density makes sense versus sprawl. A lot of people have talked about stewardship of the land. I like to point out that these developments typically use less water per capita and have a less, uh, footprint than the equivalent amount of single-family homes. And, uh, I also think this type of development... Um, and uh I also think this type of development will allow young people and families um to move to this neighborhood, which I think will be good for the community. Um, it'll be good for the local schools that have declining enrollment. And uh as a parent, this appeals to me. So I think the zoning changes are appropriate and I support them. Thank you.
Thank you, William.
Uh, the next speaker is Sterling. Sterling, uh, go ahead and unmute yourself. You'll be sworn in and then your two minutes will begin.
Do you swear?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Sterling Grogan. I live at twenty-one thirty-eight Candelaro Street, which is approximately three hundred feet west of the north parcel of the Zia Station property. I'm an ecologist with more than forty years of experience dealing with Arroyo erosion in northern New Mexico. I thank Lee and Noah and Jennifer Jenkins for the professional way they have handled public involvement in this controversial project. My comments address condition number twelve in the staff report. The memorandum I submitted to the planning commission earlier identified severe bank erosion in the Arroyo de los Chamosos on this, on the Zia Station property as a hazard inconsistent with the city's new Arroyo and drainage management plan. The Santa Fe Watershed Association has evaluated this reach of the Arroyo. Their analysis shows that the cause of the erosion is not on Zia Station property, but lies just upstream of that property. There, a natural gas pipeline crossing includes two undersized culverts that constrict high flows, accelerate the velocity of flow and cause the severe bank erosion downstream on Zia Station and other properties downstream. Bank stabilization on Zia Station property, as is required by condition number twelve in the staff report, will not address the cause of the erosion and may be washed out by future flood events. Jennifer Jenkins told me that Zia Station is willing to work with city staff, the Watershed Association and neighbors to correct the cause of the bank erosion that is upstream of the Zia Station property. Therefore, I ask the planning commission to implore the governing body to direct city staff to develop a plan and funding to address the pipeline crossing. Thank you for your attention and I stand for questions.
Thank you, Sterling.
Uh, the next speaker is uh Ben. Ben, go ahead and unmute yourself. Uh, you'll be sworn in and then your two minutes will begin.
Hello.
Hi. Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Ben Williams. I live at twenty-three sixty-seven Camino Capitan with my wife and two children. Uh, that's in Santa Fe in the Chaparral Day Road, which is adjacent to Candlelight. Um, I hope everyone is keeping well and safe during this very difficult time. Mister Chairman and Commissioners, my first remarks are that I'm not against development of the land parcels per se. If this were a low or medium density proposal, I would have fewer problems. But instead, we're facing a reckless stampede into high-density development that will have multiple adverse impacts. It's almost as if the community was ignored entirely when the developer put forth its proposals. It's almost as if the developer erased the Candlelight District upfront. We can talk about the negative aesthetic effect of the proposal on one of the main approaches to the USA's most historic small town. Visitors will get to see ugly three-story condos instead of sweeping plains and mountains. We can talk about how the developer is asking for special treatment in an infuriatingly cavalier manner. It cannot be responsible for the commission to grant what a master carte blanche license, given the considered and passionate and well-documented objections we've heard throughout this process. We can talk about the negative quality of life impacts this development will have. Among these is traffic, which will be exponentially worse. The Jenkins Gavin representative kept saying the word pedestrian, but did you notice the number of new parking spaces in the underground parking lot? This development will bring thousands of new cars onto our streets. The Jenkins Gavin representative said this product project fixes traffic issues. That's counter to common sense in what upside down world do you fix traffic issues by adding one thousand cars? Pollution will rise, pedestrians will suffer, pets will be run over and children will be at risk. The supposed improvements to the intersections are of no real consideration when weighed against the health and the quality of life liabilities that the community will suffer. At the beginning of this meeting, Mister Logson said this is not an easy decision. I disagree. It's a very easy decision. The developers should come back with a much changed and much more sensible low-impact plan. Ms. Jenkins called the development beautiful, but that's in the eye of the beholder and all I saw tonight was ugly developer profits at the expense of a settled, well-planned community. The decision tonight is no, we will not set a torch to the Candlelight District. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ben.
Uh, Chair, the next speaker is gonna be Ty. Uh, Ty, go ahead and unmute yourself and you'll be given two minutes to speak after you're sworn in. Thanks.
Thanks.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ty Bixby. I live at five Kai Pinionero in Soli Lomas, maybe half a mile away from the site. Just want to speak in favor of the project. I'm in favor of density. Um, I'm a Realtor, as someone pointed out in one of the previous early neighborhood notification meetings. Not speaking on behalf of the association, but my association did produce a study in December of two thousand twenty that demonstrated demand for an additional seven thousand housing units in this market. The people that don't live in the seven thousand missing houses uh basically drive to Albuquerque or Rio Rancho. So there's a tremendous amount of traffic. People work here. They need places to live here. I have kids, like the other people who spoke, who have kids. If you have kids, they need a place to live. And today's children that need a nice neighborhood to live in tomorrow are gonna need, need a house to live in. They need jobs. So I think it's a good thing to build three hundred and thirty units on a small piece of land instead of over like a mile and a half the way that we have out in the county in certain misguided instances. So I'm speaking in favor of the project. I think it's good to use the land we have in the city. I think density is good. It's good for business. I think it reduces traffic. It's good for uh reduction in our carbon footprint, as was previously stated. And I just want to thank the members of the commission and the land use planning staff for the work that you guys do in your service. And I think we shouldn't abuse these people because if we do, they're gonna go away. We might end up with folks that don't know what they're doing. These people know what they're doing. I think you guys are competent. I've seen your decisions based on sound land use planning instead of impassioned speeches. And I hope you guys make the right decision. Follow the code, follow the general plan and use the authority. You have to do something good for the community. Thanks.
Thanks, Ty.
Chair, the next speaker is Randall. Randall, go ahead and um unmute yourself and you'll be given, you'll be sworn in and then given two minutes to speak.
Thank you.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, my name is Randall Bell. I'm uh residing at two nine nine one Viaje Pau Real um in Santa Fe. Um, I'm here and thank you for the opportunity, Commissioners and Chair, to address you. Um, I'm here to speak on behalf of the Old Santa Fe Association, of which I am the uh president. Um, I want to, of course, with only two minutes, we can address uh very few items, but I would like to uh strongly uh indicate the Old Santa Fe Association's support for the position of the Candlelight uh Neighborhood Association, which they seem to have virtually unanimous um um uh agreement on, and many of them have spoken. Uh, these drastic changes to an existing g- general plan and a longstanding and very uh significant uh corridor protection uh ordinance uh should not be just thrown out on a whim uh to satisfy the the needs or desires of a developer. Uh, the larger community must be uh taken into account and the corridors are protected. And there has never been a corridor protection removed in Santa Fe. This would be a really terrible precedent. Uh, I urge you not to undo the corridor protection. Santa Fe is a rare and special community. Uh, it is known as the city different because of that. It has always prized its uh openness, uh its view sheds. Uh, I can't cite it now because it would take too long, but I urge you to read the uh preliminary intention statement of the uh corridor protection plan itself because it really illuminates the purposes behind that. But everyone coming in.
I think so. I said time. Um, sorry. Okay.
Thank you, Randall.
Um, Chair, the next speaker is Marlene. Marlene, please unmute yourself um and then you'll be sworn in and given two minutes to speak.
Thank you. Yes. Hi. Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Yes. My name is Marlene Martica Scali and I've lived here in, on Candlearo Street for the past uh twenty-seven years. My address is um twenty-two forty, twenty-one forty-two Candlearo. Uh, I would like, I'd like you to imagine very briefly the corner, the intersection of Zia and St. Francis. You are now turning right, going downhill, Zia. Within three blinks, you're hitting the first entrance into the Candlearo Horseshoe. Once you've traveled the entire horseshoe, you have the exit point. Um, there is a severe problem in the limited uh traffic study that has been done. And I request that that be redone to reflect current times and also those two entrances, which are also exits. The fact that we're going to be prohibited from turning left off that first Candlearo exit means we have to turn right and then do some bizarre U-turn to join the four lanes of traffic, three of which will turn left on St. Francis and one will turn right. The danger in that area is severe. In the winter time, it ices up just before you hit the railroad tracks. And as I imagine, four lanes, three lanes, two lanes icing up. And the kind of travel that those cars do, as they spin their wheels and start veering to the right or to the left or sliding back, it, it gives me uh a severe worry. So I'm asking that you take that into consideration and the fact that the Governor Miles roadway, right? Which sounds like it's far away, but it's not. That's being built up to the point that hundreds of um single residences are being built there. What is the only roads they can take to get to the center of town or to get up to St. Francis? Rodeo or Zia.
Thank you, Marlene.
Uh, Chair, the next speaker is Cindy. Cindy, please unmute yourself and you'll be sworn in and then you'll have two minutes.
Thank you.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Cindy Gregory. I live at twenty-one thirty-two Candlearo. Uh, my concerns involve pedestrian and cyclist sa- safety in the northern parcel. I have walked every square inch of this area and there is no way to get anywhere useful and none of it feels safe. We're landlocked between the railroad tracks, the neighborhood and Zia. There is no direct pedestrian access to the rail trail, the St. Francis Tunnel, Malagro Middle School, St. Michael's, the hospital shopping, even the developers' own dog park. The only choice for pedestrians is to detour a quarter mile out of your way in order to get thirty feet or to scale the steep, sharp rocks of the rail bed, which I've done daily for my commute on foot for five years. Or cross deadly arterials or get in your car, which is what most people will do. Suggesting that this is a walkable neighborhood is laughable. We have, we, New Mexico, have the awful distinction of being the state with the highest per capita death rate for walkers and cyclists in the entire country for three years in a row. Furthermore, within our state, Santa Fe County and within our county, our intersection are near the top of the naughty list. Packing this density of people, including kids and dogs, right next to the railroad tracks and busy streets when all the pedestrian attractions are on the other side seems to me to be a recipe for tragedy. Please reduce the density of this northern parcel. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Chair, the next speaker is Nancy. Uh, Nancy, go ahead and unmute yourself. You'll be given two minutes to speak after you're sworn in.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Nancy Share, eighteen ninety-four Esplendor. I live, uh, have lived for thirty-plus years at the, this address, at the west end of the Candlelight Neighborhood. I'm opposed to the density of this proposed development and the increased traffic that it will, will result. I'm hoping there can be some negotiation to lower the density via the type of zoning. There are traffic safety issues in this west end of the neighborhood, as well as the St. Francis and Zia intersections. The curve in Zia Road that's at this end makes it very difficult to see oncoming traffic headed west. And adding more traffic is going to make it even more difficult for us to turn onto Zia without pulling in front of vehicles that are headed west. It's not the developer's fault that most people drive forty-five or fifty miles an hour in a thirty-five mile an hour zone. But I think it's something the city needs to address. The uh speed is just, makes it really, really difficult to pull out onto the street safely. So the ones of us on the south side of Zia will end up having to turn right and go east if we want to go west. Which means we'll be trying to make U-turns at other intersections, or we have to go clear to Galastel and then over to rodeo in order to go west. Adding more traffic to Galastel and also an extreme inconvenience. There's also the issue of traffic noise, which has increased tremendously in recent years and will increase more with more traffic and more housing units. A lower density would cut some of the traffic and as a result, some of the noise. The noise definitely affects the quality of life for those whose homes have a back facing on.
Thank you, Nancy.
Chair, the next speaker is Justin. Uh, Justin, go ahead and unmute yourself um and then you'll be sworn in and given two minutes to speak.
Thank you.
Do you swear? Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do so swear.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Justin Robinson. I'm at one 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 Aguafria Street. Um, I'm also the executive director of the Housing Trust here in Santa Fe. And I wanted to weigh in on this issue, this controversial issue. Every, as everyone knows, our city and community uh is continually facing uh challenges of making our, our, our city a better, more equitable and more accessible place for us all. Um, one of the big challenges that we face is we do need to increase housing availability. The lack of housing drives up prices and rents all across the city. And we also have to make our community a greener place to live. Denser housing is also that answer, as, as mentioned by several people earlier. But the, the other thing that I really want to address the most is the affordable uh component of what the developers proposing. I find that to be a very effective and innovative way to address the affordable challenges that developers face today. Um, they, they are going out of their way to do, without going down the rabbit hole of uh technicalities, but their, their commitment to making their rents match fair market rents will greatly facilitate uh the availability and the accessibility of these units to people on, on uh housing choice vouchers, also known as section eight vouchers. And by, by doing that for some of the units and then paying the, paying into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for one-third of those units, I think is a very clever and very innovative way for a developer to uh address the uh affordable housing issues that we have. We, we so far, almost as, as we've seen all the apartments complex, most most developers have chosen to pay the fee in lieu in their entirety. And this developer is committing to, to. And this developer is committing to, to, to keeping many of the units available to those on vouchers. So I, I want to applaud that, that effort and I want to express my, my support for this kind of innovation. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Justin.
Chair, the next speaker is William. Looks like I have to promote William to panelist because he may be using an old version of this. So William, I'm promoting you to panelist if you can unmute yourself. Hi, William, can you unmute yourself and you'll be, and then you'll be sworn in and your two minutes will begin.
Hi, do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, please.
First.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, my name is William Gregg. I'm at eighteen seventy-nine Briante Lane. Two things. First, I'd like to ask, what is the point of having statutes on the book if they're just going to be cast aside?
William, I think we're having connection problems.
Literally asking, what's the point of having statutes if you don't follow them? Is it just a question of money trumping principles? Secondly, I previously sent a letter about this, but I'd like to go on the record again as requesting a reasonable timeline for construction established for the proposed project. We were originally presented with a timeline of seven to ten years, which I find to be an entirely excessive amount of time to be subjected to the ongoing noise, dust, and construction traffic. I would like to propose that construction on the project be limited to no more than three years. It really doesn't seem that restrictive to me for construction of a neighborhood project. Thank you.
Thank you, William.
Chair, the next speaker is going to be Ed Romero. Ed, if you could, please unmute yourself and then you will be sworn in and your two minutes will begin.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Ed Romero, three, four, five, six, Villa Magdalena, Santa Fe, New Mexico.
Thank you.
I am the, Ed Romero, I'm the executive director of Santa Fe Civic Housing Authority, which maintains the Housing Choice Voucher in, in Santa Fe. For many reasons, we are big fans of infill projects. And all of those, those reasons were already spoken to, but our predominant reason for being on this call tonight is to point out that the Housing Choice Voucher is no longer a Housing Choice Voucher, particularly in Santa Fe anymore. The, the ability to choose the neighborhood that my clients might want to live in is virtually impossible because we don't have a lot of units that are built south of Airport Surrius Road, not south, but east of Airport and Surrius Road. We like this project because it will allow our residents to have choice to live in neighborhoods that may be closer to their families, closer to the infrastructure, closer to schools that they might like, closer to jobs that they may hold. And that would be my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Chair, the next speaker is Joseph Montoya. Joseph, if you could please unmute yourself, you'll be sworn in and you'll be, two minutes will be done.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, thank you. My, my name is Joseph Montoya and I'm at ten twelve coming over. Mr. Chairman, Chairman Gutierrez, members of the commission staff, thank you for your service. I just wanted to speak a little bit about this particular development in the context of the general plan, which has been assailed here. When the general plan was created, I was the community services director at that period of time. I was also head of an advocacy organization called A Thousand Friends of New Mexico. And the idea behind A Thousand Friends of New Mexico was to be able to support our pristine open spaces, preserve them, and increase the vitality of our neighborhoods, our cities, our towns. The enemy of that is low-density sprawl. This particular development, although I wouldn't call it high, high density, I'd call it moderate density, provides a walkable place that provides housing and net income opportunities for the citizens of Santa Fe. It's desperately needed. We have to think about our kids and our kids' future. And this is the kind of development that will assist in preserving that. So I just wanted to encourage those principles in terms of providing spaces, housing, economic development, and a healthy environment for people, walkable environment for people, were incorporated into the general plan and that's what you're seeing here. This is a, what we were looking for in creating the general plan through hundreds and hundreds of meetings that were developed during that period of time. And this is a physical rendition of that plan. So I just wanted to say that I was supportive of this development. In addition, professionally, I'm also the director of the Santa Fe County Housing Authority and I want to agree with Ed that we don't have places to put our vouchers. And we need more places and more choices for that to happen. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Joseph.
Chair, the next speaker is Joan Conroe. Joan, can you please unmute your microphone? You'll be sworn in and then your two minutes will begin.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Joan Conroe and I live at twenty-five twenty-one Caie de Rincon Benito. I share the concerns that others have raised in regard to the emphasis on one-bedroom apartments and especially density and traffic. Like ninety-six percent of my neighbors, I think the land should remain in the highway protective corridor. If the developer and city planners believe the corridor is outdated, it should be reviewed and considered publicly, not gutted piecemeal. My primary concern, however, is that the developer wants so much and is giving so little in return. He knew about the protective corridor and the low-density zoning when he bought the land. I do not believe he's given sufficient rationale to justify his request for such massive entitlements. It seems unfair that our low-key neighborhood should be so greatly impacted just so the neighbor, just so the developer can achieve maximum profits. Simply being local doesn't justify this kind of a handout to a developer. We have never said no development, just something more compatible with the existing neighborhood, please. I urge you to send this back and ask the developer to work with the community to come up with something more appropriate to the existing neighborhoods. Thank you for sitting here so patiently and listening to our comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
Christine Malcolm, if you could please unmute yourself and then you'll be sworn in and given two minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Christine Malcolm and I own my house at eighteen seventy-four Candela since nineteen eighty-nine. Oh, I thought that was separate. The presentation that was given didn't mention anything about Zia and Candelaro intersections. The north side of the Candalite neighborhood has only two entrance exits. This is a safety issue. We need a light at Candelaro and Zia. We will be locked into both our Candelaro exit and entrances, most, the exit part, due to the proposed Galastayo Street close by and the U-turn to accommodate the apartment-townhouse development. All three being in close proximity makes it more difficult to get out from the northern part of Candelaro to, on Zia to get, make a left on to St. Francis. We already have a problem with this. I noticed they moved the Hawk Light pedestrian crossing from Candelaro and Zia to the Galastayo-Zia intersection. This is not what was stated in their plan. They said it was going to be at the Candelaro-Zia intersection. Ms. Jenkins avoided talking, speaking about the impact of this development beyond Galastayo Street as it extends down Zia well beyond that point in adjoining neighborhoods. They say that changes are a good thing for a city and will provide advantages to adjoining neighborhoods. The disadvantages considerably outweigh the advantages for our neighboring communities. There have been many changes to this area over the last twenty years and although the noise and traffic have increased, we have accepted this. However, this change is extreme and not in compliance with codes. There will be exponential increase in traffic. I cannot imagine more traffic and associated noise. If this is approved, it will pose a danger to our safety and damage our property, which would compromise our rights to the enjoyment of our properties. I didn't buy a house to live in a bustling neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
Nate, Nate, go ahead and unmute yourself. You'll be sworn in and then given two minutes.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Nate Krail and I live at eight-two-nine Dunlap Street, Santa Fe, New Mexico. I'm in my early twenties and I care about equitable environments and an inclusive housing future. More affordable housing and denser hous, more affordable and denser housing is imperative. More low-density, single-family housing, as others have stated, is unsustainable and not climate resilient. I'm sure that the traffic issues can be ameliorated and should not be an impediment for this development. According to the twenty-twenty San Fe Housing Report, in twenty-nineteen rental vacancy rates were two-point-three percent for the county compared to the state rate of three-point-nine percent. A vacancy rate under five percent is considered a supply-constrained market. We need more rental housing. We need density. Furthermore, in a recent podcast, podcast episode of Ninety-Nine Percent Invisible, one of the most popular design podcasts in the world, the episode highlighted the city's affordable housing crisis and ever higher cost of living in Santa Fe. Who do we want Santa Fe to be for? Do we want the city to be known as a high-cost place? Do we want to be inclusive for development or maintain the drastic inequality of the status quo? Do we want to have space for young people and renters? I hope you consider these questions and the data I mentioned. I hope you approve this development and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nate.
Jody, Jody, if you could please unmute yourself, you'll be sworn in and given two minutes.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jody Densmore. We own our home at twenty-three oh-nine Caie Pacifica, Santa Fe, New Mexico. Thank you, commissioners, and hopefully Jennifer Jenkins is still here also to listen to your community this evening. I oppose this project. The sheer size and density, Jennifer spoke about the traffic being fixed, that is impossible. With three-hundred-and-eighty-four units of living, that's if one, that's if one unit only has one car. We know that that's not the statistic. That's not counting business traffic. This is a very dangerous intersection. It is going to uptick the traffic on Zia the whole way across. I'm in La Paz neighborhood, which is back a little bit. We are going to feel the effects the whole way back here. On the standpoint of our, of our serene and beautiful city, I would be very, very saddened to see yet another large development taking up the beautiful mountains and the beautiful sky that we all moved here for. I support the corridor protection. I support the comments that the other speakers that opposed this project. What makes this developer so special that the city would, would honor low-density zone that would, that they would not honor the low-density zone for this space? There's still an issue, a huge issue about water. No matter what is said about the security of water, there is no such thing as water security when it is not being replenished due to climate change. The amount of water for these huge developments coming up is a very grave concern. There are articles and, and studies out all the time specifically about the southwest and specifically about New Mexico. We must consider the water. We must. As a twenty-year resident and a homeowner in Santa Fe, I oppose the monstrosity and the danger-inducing project that is in front of us this evening. Thank you for your time.
Chair, the next speaker is Pamela. Pamela, please unmute yourself. You'll be sworn in and given two minutes.
Okay.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Pam Shaffer. I live at eighteen ninety-two Esplendor Street. I've lived here for twenty-eight years on Esplendor Street, which is located on the west end of the Candalite neighborhood. First, I'd like to say that I stand by the CNA position statement and feel that the density of the project is not in conjunction with our neighborhood. I'm not opposed to development. However, I would like to keep the development at a much reduced density. The developers knew what the zoning was when they bought the property. However, I'd like to concentrate on the test, on the pedestrian impact at the west end of the Candalite neighborhood and the impact on bicycle riders. First, I walk across Zia Road from Portavella to, to Candelaro to walk the loop, as do many who live at this end of the development on the south side of Zia. Presently, the traffic at this intersection makes Zia a very difficult cross and there's no crosswalk nearby. With the additional high volume of traffic on Zia, it will be even more treacherous, making it nearly impossible to cross. Second, I also ride my bike in the bike lane going eastbound on Zia Road to get to the rail trail. I'm concerned of wide-turning radius vehicles, including big trucks that are making U-turns on eastbound Zia as proposed. These vehicles, which cannot turn within the two lanes, will be encroaching on the bicycle lane. This will be disastrous for bicyclists who are in the bicycle lane but run the very real, but run a very real risk of being struck by these vehicles. Therefore, these are two more safety concerns to keep our neighborhood safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Pamela.
Chair, the next speaker is Dan. Dan, if you could unmute yourself, you'll be sworn in and then given two minutes.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, I'm Dan Schultz. I live at nineteen nineteen Caie Michaela here in Santa Fe. I oppose the project. I agree with all of the things that have been said previously about the ethical, legal, and aesthetic irresponsibility of approving either the zoning change or the proposed plan. I just want to point out something that hasn't been pointed out yet, although possibly some of the previous speakers might have gotten to it if they had time. I believe that it's impossible to approve the plan, let's say the plan, but maybe even the zoning change, without a serious study of how the possibly hundreds of people will get to Chaparral Elementary School. They can't go out and turn left on Zia. So there's one and only one way to get there and that is to turn neighborhood streets into commuter streets. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Heather, Heather, if you can please unmute yourself, you'll be sworn in and then given two minutes to speak.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
Heather Vaults, two-one-seven-zero Candelaro Street. My comment is on stormwater runoff. This project is a huge change from porous to non-porous surfaces. As someone said earlier, the roof area of De Vargas Mall, which helps put an image to it. A few years ago, you may remember, there was a huge rainstorm that affected this neighborhood and this area to the west with flooding. The Arroyo was barely able to drain this area during that flood event. Therefore, the planning must be considered to mitigate future property damage due to flooding, including possible downstream impacts to city. including possible downstream impacts to city property. The Arroyo Chemezo path, Santa Fe High School, and the Votec Bridge, which is already eroding underneath. Therefore, I strongly encourage a smaller footprint and planning for stormwater runoff. Possibly consider engineering, some rainwater harvesting, and so forth. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Heather.
Sure, the next speaker is Ann Watkins. Ann, if, I'm gonna have to promote Ann to panelist, so hold on a second, Ann. And once you're promoted, Ann, you can go ahead and unmute yourself, and then you'll be sworn in.
I don't see her. Has she unmuted herself?
Ann, are you unmuted? I see you down there.
I don't see a microphone icon next to her name. Hoping she has a microphone, but it's not clear.
And you might have to change your audio settings by the mute button, and then click on audio settings to make sure it's set to the same as system or to your camera. Sure, I'm not sure what you'd like to do. It looks like she might be having difficulty.
Let her work on that, and let's go to Jody.
Okay.
I think.
I believe Jody already spoke. She brought up the issue of water availability.
Thank you, Director.
Members of public, if you haven't spoke already and you'd like to speak again or speak for the first time, you can use the raise hand function, or if you're calling, you can press star nine.
I believe I saw Ms. Benenato's hand flash for a second. I'm not sure if she would like to speak.
Oh, yes. Let's see. All right, Christina Gonzalez would like to speak. Christina, if you could please unmute yourself, you'll be given two minutes to speak after you're sworn in.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Christina Gonzalez, eighteen seventy-three Candela Street. I'm a resident of the Candlelight Neighborhood. The Candlelight Neighborhood Association does not speak for me. I know you've been hearing from a lot of residents saying that they oppose this project. I'd like to speak in favor and for on behalf of the people who are seeking housing. You haven't heard from them tonight, and there, those are the voices that thus far have been silenced. I work in education in Santa Fe, and we need more housing for educators like myself, for young families whom you have heard from this evening. So I support this project. I understand my neighbors' concerns about traffic and safety. It's terrifying for my children along Zia to walk to the rail trail, to walk over to Albertson's. I think Jennifer Jenkins actually did a really fine job of talking about the setbacks, exceeding those setbacks. The plan between the road and then having trees and landscape architecture and an extra-wide sidewalk, I think those address a lot of my concerns, particularly around safety. So you're in, you're in a very difficult position. I appreciate your service, Planning Commission members, and thank you.
Thank you, Christina.
Christine Malcolm. Christine, if you could, please unmute yourself, and you'll be sworn in and then given two minutes.
I've already spoken.
Okay, so then.
Thank you.
And then, Rick, you've already spoken also, so I'm gonna lower your hand, and Stephanie Benenato would like to speak. Stephanie, please unmute yourself, and you'll be given.
Can you hear me? I just, okay, good, because I just lost Noah's voice. This is Stephanie Benenato, P O Box one-six-zero, on Santa Fe.
Stephanie, I need, I need to swear you in, please, I need to swear you in. Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Now you may state your name and address for the record.
Stephanie Benenato, P O Box one-six-zero-one. I live in South Capital, but I use the center section frequently to go to the Travis Center. I also use it as a bicyclist. I can tell you that it's a challenge to get across Zia at this intersection. I also want to bring up that this is being improperly presented to you by laypeople for a layperson. In Lee versus Katrin, which is a two thousand nine New Mexico Court of Appeals case, it clearly states that laypeople cannot represent other laypeople in front of an administrative body or at a judicial hearing, that they are practicing law without a license. So I believe that this whole meeting needs to be rescheduled, and the developer needs to hire a lawyer and then have Gavins and Jenkins be the witnesses. In addition, I am in for corridor production. I believe that this project should have less density, not as much density as it has. I think five changes to zoning and variances shows that it's just not appropriate. I don't think that studios and one-bedrooms are gonna bring families there. And something that hasn't been mentioned is the gates of the railroad. They are down for a very long time, so well before the railroad, the railroad appears, the train appears coming in either south or north into the station, the gates are down, and the traffic backs up in the turning lane on St. Francis into the moving vehicle lanes there, if you're coming from the north. If the gates would not go down until after or as the train approaches from the north, but when it gets to the station, the gates go back up. And if it's coming from the south, if the gates don't go down until the train gets to the station, this would alleviate at least one traffic problem. That is the way it works at South Capital. They are much shorter lengths of time that the gates obstruct traffic at those intersections on either side of the South Capital Station, and I think that at least would be one thing in terms of affordability.
Thank you, Stephanie.
It looks like Victoria would like to speak. Victoria, go ahead and unmute yourself. You'll be sworn in and given two minutes to speak.
Thank you.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Victoria Mayolo Putnam, and I live at eighteen ninety-eight Esplendor Street in the Candelaro neighborhood. I have lived here for thirty years and appreciate the neighborhood just the way it is. I prefer the R-five through R-seven zoning to remain as it is, so we can continue to have low-density housing. To me, this means no apartments. I can appreciate much of the proposal on the south side, but I am still opposed to the dense building on the north area. The traffic at this intersection, when COVID restrictions are not in place and all businesses and schools are in full operation, is already a significant clog at peak hours. Numerous accidents have occurred and will increase with increased housing, as others have said. Pedestrians will be in danger. Please consider these points when you think about this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. I don't see any hands up, so we're gonna make another call. If there's anybody out there that would like to testify on these cases, please raise your hand. We see two people on the telephone if you want to speak. Star nine, is that correct? No?
That is correct, sure. It looks like somebody who's called in would like to speak. I'm going to unmute you, and then you'll be sworn in. I think it's a six-two-nine number.
Okay, do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is James Shook. I'm at two-one-two-zero, Candelaro Street. Thank you very much for hearing me out. I'm a lifelong resident of this beautiful city and this beautiful state. I fought for my country, and I've shed a lot of tears and blood, and I want everybody here to listen, and thank you for listening. The people that live in this neighborhood are good, honest, working human beings. It's not to say that the people that, or the buildings that are proposed to be built won't be, or the people that occupy them. But I want everyone to know this, this neighborhood, on numerous occasions, has lent a helping hand and a wonderful experience for us. But the traffic is disgusting. I've sat, and I've left my neighborhood, and I've sat at this intersection here, and have waited and waited and waited for my turn to go by. And it's disgusting that the city has yet to occupy or even understand what's going on here. You add another four hundred homes and another, I don't know, how many office buildings or whatever, it's gonna get a lot worse. The people in this community paid a lot of money to live here, and I continue to pay huge amount of taxes. People understand this. Those people that are gonna make these decisions, they don't live here. You developers, you don't live here. You don't know what it's like to have to deal with the traffic here. I want everyone here to know, if you're gonna do this building behind us and behind me, there'll be some ramifications. Thank you.
Thank you, James.
All right. It looks like we have another person who'd like to speak who's phoning in. It's a five-oh-five-three-one-zero number, so I'm gonna go ahead and allow you to talk. Please unmute yourself. You'll be sworn in, and you'll be given two minutes.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello there. Thank you all so much for all your time and listening to this great effort tonight. My name is Miriam Corneli. I live at twenty-six thirty-nine Villa Berenda. And I've heard several important things today that we need more housing. We need infill, not sprawl. And we need modified development that integrates with our neighborhood. We need pedestrian neighborhoods. And I believe that the pedestrian idea is great. However, it has to be integrated into the whole rest of the community. It can't just be one little pod that's available for pedestrians when we can't even walk across the street to the Albertsons without getting run over. The other thing that I really want to commend, Jenkins, Gavin, Gavin's for, is the idea of sustainability. However, I don't believe that this is really addressing the sustainability problem, because if you looked in last week's newspaper, the forest is in danger. The forest fires are increasing. We're in a huge global warming crisis. The Rio Grande is drying up. You just need to look around you and see that this climate is changing. This building project doesn't seem to have any kind of emphasis on rain catchment, on water harvesting, on integrated land use, on plant growth, on native species, on solar collection, on passive solar, and I really, really implore you guys in the Planning Commission to not only consider maintaining our beautiful views in Santa Fe and cutting down any four-story and three-story buildings, because they really ruin the ambiance, but also to look ahead twenty-five, fifty years into the future, when we are gonna be hotter and hotter and hotter over here in New Mexico, and we have to set a precedent for educating people and informing them about our cultural values that go back millennia and not just fall into beautiful architecture as a, as a selling point. We need to look deeper and broader and more thoroughly than that for what Santa Fe has to offer our community and our world, and we don't want more tap and jams.
Thank you, Miriam.
Jerry, Jerry, please unmute yourself. You'll be given two minutes to speak after you're sworn in.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Jerilyn Morning Salazar, and I live at two-one-zero-one, Boltup Road. I oppose this plan, and I oppose the zoning changes. Aldo Leopold said, "When we see land as a community to which we belong, we may begin to use it with love and respect." And he also said, "We abuse land because we regard it as a commodity belonging to us." When we see land as a community to which we belong, we may begin to use it with love and respect. I've heard from so many community members tonight who are asking for love and respect. The open space that will be eliminated through the culmination of this project is important to the beauty of this city and the soul of this city. Also eliminated will be the wildlife that live in the open space and call it home. We have so few beautiful open spaces left in the city of Santa Fe. This amazing undeveloped land is truly fantastic, and I hope the city of Santa Fe considers purchasing the property from the developer and continuing its designation as open space. I don't know if you've walked through it, but as an educator, I understand that in order to gain some sort of connection to the land, you should be within it. And so I encourage people to go out and walk that space. It is truly beautiful. Thank you for listening to me tonight.
Thank you, Jerry.
It looks like Ann is the next speaker. Ann, could you please unmute yourself, and you'll be sworn in and given two minutes.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I so affirm. My name is Ann Bochamp. I'm a, I live at eighteen sixty-three Camino Lumbre, which is part of the Candlelight Neighborhood. I wanna look at two things. One, I think the proposal needs more work to address traffic and U-turn concerns. It needs more work to address pedestrian, pedestrian safety. I would also like to see more attention given to water catchment, water runoff issues. There was a gentleman that spoke earlier about the, about the Arroyo and the, the, the issues further up the Arroyo where, which makes water pressure when there's a, when there's flooding that much worse, to have those addressed. And also, I also wanna put a, put a word in for water catchment, solar pot opportunities, and other issues that will assist in the future and to incorporate those in the project now. I think I'm the only house on my street that has, that actually has solar panels on it. And the, and finally, I, I like the aesthetics of being able to see the mountains from my windows or from when I walk up the street. I don't think the, the ma, the, the building at, on the south side that's gonna be three stories tall is gonna obstruct my view necessarily, but it's a, I'm very uneasy about something that tall and that much in aesthetically, how that, how that's gonna read, once it's, once it's built, or if it's built. So I, I, in general, I support the, the higher-density housing. in general, I support the, the higher density housing because there is such a need for housing in Santa Fe. I would wanna see more space for families, which would mean two-bedroom rather than one-bedroom apartments.
That is time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Anne.
Chair Anne Watkins is gonna try again. Anne, uh, let's see if we can, um, promote you to panelist and hopefully your audio is working now. Um, you're promoted to panelist, so you can unmute yourself. Um, hopefully. Anne, are you there? Does not appear to be working. Anne, you might wanna try to call in also. Um, that might be working better for you if you use the call-in number on the invitation or on the agenda.
Not working on the unmuting, Noah?
Uh, yeah, Chair doesn't actually even give me an option to unmute.
It looks like she has no microphone possibly or not one hooked up.
Okay, uh, while we're waiting for Anne, is there anybody that has not spoken that would like to speak? Please raise your hand if so.
Chair, do you think it might be a good idea to have, uh, uh, Noah maybe read out the call-in number really quickly? Just for those who maybe don't have it handy but would like to speak, like Ms. Watkins or something, someone like that.
Why don't you do that, Mr. Burke? That's a great idea in case she doesn't have it to try and get ahold of us so we can get her public comment in.
All right, let me just get to a place where I can take a look at this invitation and the phone number because I did not memorize it. Um, let me see. Okay. Uh, if you're calling from an iPhone, you can call, um, one three four six two four eight seven seven nine nine. Or you can do, uh, eight two six nine eight seven eight five three four eight. You have to put a one from that. Or from just a regular telephone, you can do, um, one three four six two four eight seven seven nine nine. And there's several other numbers. Did you want me to go through those, Chair?
No, if, if those two numbers should work, but just give them one more time, a little bit slower in case she was looking for a pen and paper.
Okay. For, if you're calling from the US, it's one three four six two four eight seven seven nine nine.
Well, while we're waiting, uh, I wanna just pull the commissioners. Uh, it's rounding up ten o'clock. Do you wanna take a five-minute break and see if Anne calls in? Or do you guys wanna just keep going through if you just show me by waving your heads?
I, I, I'd also like to add to the discussion if we can, um, given the late hour. This is a massive case, and it's gonna impact the city in a, in a huge way. Probably as much as midtown probably is estimated to. I'm just wondering if maybe we could have a discussion if we choose to take a break or even if we don't choose to take a break. I think we should have a discussion about how much longer to take this tonight and if that's enough time for adequate reflection on the case or if, or we need to consider taking this into another, um, hearing session. Um, to give the commissioners the adequate amount of time to digest everything we've heard tonight and then to, um, review the packet again through that lens. So that's just something I'd like to propose is that we have a procedural conversation about how do we go, where do we go from here, given that it's almost ten?
This is Commissioner Chavez. I agree. Um, I feel like I, there was a lot of public, um, input we had, and it would be nice to really consider if we have the time tonight to really make that decision or if there is, um, if we need to decide as a commission, um, a different plan. I feel like there's a lot to consider, a lot to review now that we have this information.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Faulkner, Commissioner Chavez. Uh, thoughts from other commissioners?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Vice Chair Hogan, please.
Um, you know, I think there's a lot to this. Um, I don't know how, I don't think we're gonna get it done tonight. Just my, I just think there's so many questions that come up and, um, you know, I think we really need to spend the time to go through those and make sure we all have a clear understanding of what's, you know, what's going on. So I would kinda like to try to get a few things out on the table if possible so that then if we're gonna come back, um, and discuss it some more that it gives, you know, we were providing some direction on what we might need to see yet.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hogan. Commissioner Satania.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, can't see. Um, I agree with, um, Vice Chair Hogan. I'm
Stop time.
Oh, there's Sterling. Okay, I agree, I agree with Commissioner Hogan. Um, before we move to, um, potentially postpone this meeting, I, I do have some questions that are fresh on my mind, and I don't know if there's other commissioners that maybe we could ask the applicant, um, maybe before making a, a decision to not, you know, to not make a decision tonight, but maybe, um, get some questions out there that maybe they could, uh, you know, follow up with us on, um. So that's what I would like to add.
Thank you, Commissioners Satania. And when you're saying questions you, uh, or, or direction, both from staff and, uh, the applicant?
Um, yeah, I mean, sure, just, I mean, to get the, I don't want, yes, from staff and the applicant, yes, both.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I too, um, would like to kind of see or, you know, I think it needs to be put out there by the commissioners to, to see what, what we're looking at. Um, and to put it out there to the, to staff, to the developer, to Ms. Jenkins, to, to the public of kind of what we're looking for. Um, this is a big development. Uh, it's definitely something that's, looks like it's needed in our city. Um, however, there's quite a lot of, uh, stuff surrounding this that, um, can be, uh, can take a lot of time to hash out. So I think that if we have a clear, um, idea from the commission of what we're looking for and however long that takes, um, to not get too, too late into the evening though. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Garcia, uh, Commissioner Lawrence, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to ask, um, perhaps a question of, of city staff on this matter procedurally. Um, if we postpone a decision, um, what does that mean in terms of when we are deciding? I think the agenda for the next meeting has been published. I don't know if we can continue this decision at that time or if it needs to be then two meetings from now, and I'm wondering if someone can answer that for me.
Uh, let me start before, before staff goes in. If the agenda can be amended and I would like to see this on the very next agenda that it could be put on for old business, but I don't know what the procedures are with staff, so that's my take on it. We'll let staff answer from there.
So, uh, thank you, Chair and Commissioners, um, and Sally, feel, feel free to chime in. I think since this has already been publicly noticed for as a hearing, um, and we ended, if the commission makes a motion to postpone to the next meeting, I don't think it has to follow the same, um, publication deadlines. We can amend the agenda. Um, and it wouldn't follow the same publication notice deadlines as it would if it were a brand-new business versus, right, an old business. So is that about right, Sally?
I'd agree with that, and I would recommend that if there is a motion to postpone, that the maker of the motion and the commission is very clear about whether we would be reopening anything for public comment. I suspect two hours in that we would probably be closing the public comment on the case and postponing for deliberations. Or maybe, um, if you have further questions of the applicant, we could spar back in the applicant and allow them to respond. I think it's important to allow them to kind of respond, but, um, so that'd be my only recommendation. But I think we can postpone to a date certain. We should say when that is tonight on the record, and then if you wanna move it to February, if staff thinks we can accommodate that in February or the first meeting in March.
And Chair, I would also say that, um, we don't have really any new business in March in terms of cases that would be heard. So, um, that is, um, an open time right now unless we wanted to bump it to the next February eighteenth meeting. Um, and that, or postpone to that if, if the commission chose to do that, and then we would probably change those cases, um, to the March meeting because they're, they're relatively controversial and big cases, and I think loading this agenda or loading that agenda with, with this case also would probably, um, be, uh, a lot.
Okay, so, uh, what I'm hearing is the agenda's been published for March eighteen, or February, I'm sorry, February eighteenth, but we are free, uh, for the agenda on the first meeting in March.
There's, there's nothing on, okay. There's nothing on that agenda.
Okay, thank you.
No, but I think, I think it was also said that we could move what's on the agenda for the eighteenth of February to March and do this one, um, in two weeks, and I'd prefer doing that because I'll remember it better.
I concur with Commissioner Clow on that.
Okay, um, Director Agerson, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, fellow commissioners, you know, we did at the beginning, uh, Lee's, uh, I thought did an excellent job with his introduction, uh, this evening, although it seems like it was quite a while ago. Um, anyways, I think that there, we have the two cases in front of us around the map amendment. And then we have these three other cases that are very intertwined with one another. Um, and I don't know if the commission feels up to maybe trying to take on the questions around the map amendment this evening and then seeing how, you know, if we could get that done in an hour or so, uh, trying to get done around eleven and then save the other three cases on the agenda for a subsequent meeting. Um, but if the commission feels that they're also intertwined with one another and we really need to tackle all five simultaneously, um, I would recommend that we identify a time, uh, to postpone and, and, and deal with all of those, uh, in one, in one meeting. So I just threw that out there because I just wanted to kind of remind us of some of the things Lee, the, uh, mentioned in his introduction.
Thank you, Director. Um, I, I know that there's questions that they wanna get forward for, uh, the, the applicant or staff. I think a good place to start is by hearing maybe some of those questions from the commissioners, uh, that they want answers on. And we'll start seeing a pattern form if it's a lot around the, um, the, uh, the, the the general plan amendments or if it's more towards the other three cases. So, um, I'm ready for questions for staff or the applicant from commissioners.
Well, Mr. Chair, can I just ask one other question? We've established that we're gonna postpone the decision. Are we're gonna, that's something we're considering. Can we discuss what is our, what's our hard stop time tonight? Once people start asking questions, we're gonna get into like a whole, it could go on till one in the morning. And so I think it'd be good to establish a, a stop time if possible that then we would make the motions to do all the business end of what we have to do to, to, um, move forward with this case.
Okay, um, Commissioners Satania, please.
Um, yeah, I would like to suggest again, just to get a sense of where the commission is at, what types of questions that we might have to provide some context of where we might be looking for the next meeting. Um, and given what was suggested by Assistant City Attorney Paez that, you know, we have maybe like a five-minute time limit per commissioner and you're able to pass, but that would keep us under, you know, the next thirty minutes, us just kinda getting some questions out there, um, and, and then having that be the cutoff time. But tha- that's just a suggestion.
That's fine. I, I'm open to, to the commission's will, so.
Mr. Chair, have you closed the, uh, public hearing at this point of, of we moved on?
I have not. We were, we were waiting for Anne. Uh, it doesn't look like Anne's gonna make it. Um, and there's no more hands up. Uh, before I close the public hearing, we had, uh, a various different people testify. Is there any questions from the commission that they would like answered from somebody from the public if they're still on? If not, I will close the public hearing. Okay, so seeing none, I will close the public hearing, uh, on this case and turn it over to the commission.
So Sally, procedurally, do we have to make a motion to set the time? The end time at, or can we just, is that something we can just? Like, what's the procedure?
Chair, the chair is Commissioner Faulkner. There's no established procedure that I'm aware of for this commission. The governing body does follow a rule that anything they don't consider before eleven-thirty that they make a motion to extend the time. Um, this commission could follow that, uh, if you, if you think that's an appropriate guideline, but I don't think there's anything binding on you. So a person could move to postpone with appropriate, you know, stipulations at, at any time.
So if, if each commissioner did their five minutes, that's, that's if every commissioner wanted to do their five minutes. What, what are we looking at time-wise?
Just under eleven o'clock is, is what it'll come out to. Commissioners, are, are you good with that? You guys wanna get started and, and we need to, we need to get started, uh, on, on the questions that we want answered by, uh, either staff or the applicant for, uh, the meeting. Ms. Jenkins, did I see your hand up or no? Okay. Okay. Uh, Commissioner Garcia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, if I could maybe request, um, just a few minutes to kinda gather my thoughts. Um, write a few notes down as far as the questions, maybe a bathroom break. I don't know if anybody needs one. Um, at your, uh, at your discretion. Thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you, Commissioner Garcia. I'll, I'll ask again. Anybody wanna take a five-minute break or you wanna keep going? I'm, I'm flexible either way.
Five-minute break sounds like a good idea.
Okay, all right, let's take a five-minute break. It's, it's ten oh eight. Uh, we'll be back at ten thirteen and we'll start asking questions. Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Hello.
Hi, what are you knitting over there? I'm I'm totally intrigued.
I am very slowly knitting a sweater. It it takes me years to knit, but whenever I have a meeting that I I'm not, you know, needing to be right here for.
I think it's awesome. Cool, I was just wondering, I was I was, like I said, I was intrigued.
It is a great way to use my hands and stay focused.
There you go.
Commissioners, we ready to get started? I know a few more are coming in, but we can start. Do we have? There she is, Ms. Jenkins, and and we have staff. So it's my understanding, just for clarity, we are now going to express to either Ms. Jenkins or staff what we're going to lay out questions that we have. And these are going to be things that she's going to be prepared prepared to answer at the next meeting if it's postponed, which like where it looks like it's headed.
Chair, can I can I make a suggestion here? Kind of judging or engaging kind of the commission's kind of wishes and stuff. I might make the suggestion that we postpone this meeting now so that the commissioners can formulate questions from from the public comment that they've now heard from the packet that they have and for the respective subject matter areas. And then they can come with the questions when we at the next meeting. And we can have our DRT members and the applicant and everybody present and we can start asking those questions because it seems like to just kind of have five minutes each, there may be more questions than just in five minutes. And questions lead to more questions, right? So you hear other people's questions and that may actually make you think of more questions. So that would kind of just be maybe my suggestion to the commission and to you guys, but it's really up to you, obviously. So I just was going to want to throw that out there.
Okay, I understand what you're saying, but I I was thinking these were questions that they they wanted to put out there so that you as staff or Ms. Jenkins are prepared to answer specifically at the next meeting. We don't want no answers this evening from these questions, just be prepared to answer them. Commissioner Lawrence, please.
Mr. Chair, then could I perhaps suggest that that we just focus on if we have any questions that will require someone to get the answers? Because there there are different types of questions and we we don't want to go down that path of opening up all of our questions. But if there are things that we know that will require research or someone coming back to us, we can focus on that right now.
Yeah, absolutely, that's that that'll be fine, that we we focus them and and we're not looking for answers this evening, but they're going to be questions that can be answered at a later time. The other thing I would ask the commission, it doesn't, if it's anything in this plan and you have a question about it, put it out there, whether it's landscape, stormwater, anything that comes to mind. Put it out there. So does that sound good to the commissioners?
Yes.
Okay, I'm I'm getting some nods, okay, let's let's start. We're not going to put a timer on anybody, so just whoever wants to go first, Commissioner Satania.
I'll go first.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Jenkins, some of the questions that I'm going to be looking to have answers for is there seems to be a lot of focus about height restrictions in this particular matter. And given given the height restrictions of the current protection or the current corridor protection. So one of the things that I wanted to look at is what makes your project infeasible under the current corridor production protection? The other thing that I'm interested in looking at is that why is it that you have? What prevents you from applying for, you know, commercial or high residential within the given SCHC corridor? That makes you any different than what we find directly across the street? As you pointed out early in your presentation, there, you know, there's a lot of high density residential, there's commercial which provides options for mixed use under those categories. So I would like to understand why is it that you can't develop your property, this property, given the criteria that that your neighbors across the street were able to develop under the same the same SCHC? And then the other thing that I'm interested in is that another argument that's being made both by staff and by the applicant is this idea that the general plan continues to provide, you know, support infill and future growth. And one of the things that I see here in the general plan, given that this is what we have to consider when looking at the criteria, it states in chapter four, growth management, it's by definition increased densities. It states in both infill and future growth areas, the city must encourage higher densities of residential and commercial development than existing zoning often allows. And I think that's the point that's been made by both staff and the applicant. However, the next sentence right after that says, this approach does not necessarily require greater building height, but rather greater massing on specifically identified infill sites within the urban area. So I'm interested to hear your response, given that this has been used by, you know, to promote that it, you know, this project or, you know, making these recommendations of the governing body to to approve these amendments that is supported by the infill, but somehow that this is excludes these higher, you know, these greater building heights where the chapter or the general plan clearly states that this approach doesn't necessarily require building greater building height. So I kind of want to understand the relationship between the argument that's being made from that front. And again, back to my original question about what makes your project infeasible under the current corridor protection? And and why is it that you cannot develop this property given the same corridor and what you see across the street? And then I'm also interested, I I was really interested about the the gentleman that brought up the elementary school. I'm not sure if that's on the other side, but I want to understand at least maybe from staff, you know, forcing that that road, that turning for three lanes to prevent them. I'm not sure how that works, but I think that person raised a very interesting point regarding the elementary school. So not sure how that works, but that's something else I'd like to address. And I think that is it for me, I'll probably have more in two weeks.
Thank you, Commissioner Satania. Commissioner Clow, you had your hand up and then we'll go to Commissioner Garcia.
Um, yeah, I only had two sort of question comments and that is the, you know, how viable is the project if the third story was eliminated on the south side buildings that fronted on on St. Francis? I know the ones on the north really look, they might be three stories, but they're going to look like two stories because of how the how the land slopes down and the grading, which can't be done on the south side. So would, you know, what's the consideration of maybe making those two story? And the next question I have is I'm assuming the townhouses are not rentals, but are rather are going to be sold? And if that's true, why aren't those some of those being affordable housing?
If I may, Commissioner Gutierrez, Commissioner Clow, I'd be happy to go ahead and answer that.
No, Ms. Jenkins, we're just, we're not going to looking for answers right now. So if you just
I will make a note of that.
If you'll make a note and get back to Commissioner Clow, I appreciate it. You're done, Commissioner Clow?
I'm done, I'm done.
Thank you. Commissioner Garcia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the two or three points that kind of really stood out for me was the South Central Corridor, including the height restrictions and so on and so forth, also brought up by Commissioner Satania. Within that, how does the height of these current buildings work with the current topography of the area? In elevation relative to other buildings that are near them? Obviously, the only thing we have probably in in comparison to that is probably across the street where Albertson's is and how that elevation of that building is based on the topography. I know that the South Central Highway Corridor, we had a lot of discussion over some buildings that were in the midtown link. And the topography of those buildings was really high, which made the buildings be very high. So I we had a lot of discussion on that previously. And that's kind of something that I'm interested in for our discussion in the next meeting. The other thing that I had here in my notes is the traffic impact analysis, specifically that how it how it relates to St. Francis? Because it does seem like there's a lot of traffic on St. Francis. And and I know you've addressed the issue on on Zia and it looks nice. However, you know, there is a lot of going to be a lot of people walking across St. Francis. I, in my opinion, I think the school, I don't think it Chaparral School anymore. I think it's something else, but there still is a school there. So there's a lot of people walking, whether it's to the store or Walgreens. And then the last point that I would just like to be educated on is Galvesteau moving the actual street. Is that permissible? Is it being done properly and all within the legal rights of of the city to to change that? Allowing the developer to changes? So those are about the three points that I have that are most important to me, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Chavez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. I, some of my comments or questions actually tie to Commissioner Garcia. The first is the right in and right out from Galvesteau. Somebody from the public did mention U-turns and you and Chaparral is west of this project. And so I'm worried about U-turns and increase in traffic and those U-turns when we're talking about school traffic, parents going in and out of Chaparral and Santa Fe High. So I'm wondering if that's been considered. I'm also wondering how that looks on the east side of Zia because we're going to have an increase in U-turns on both directions of those of that road because of the right in and out only. Also with St. Francis, I think that that needs to be focused when we're talking about traffic. We're trying to promote and increase the pedestrian use and community, which I actually love about the project. But I also know that we're going to be pulling individuals from that side, from the east side of Zia to go to the development once it's there. And so what have we considered the safety of pedestrian crossing on St. Francis? Have we considered the traffic of that? Those were two immediate concerns. Again, I appreciate the thought and the work that went into, you know, the traffic regulation and improvement on Zia, but we're actually going to be causing other situations and I'm not sure we've looked at that. So I would like clarification if that has been examined and what the thoughts are on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Chavez. Commissioner Piccarella.
Yes, so the topics that I'll really want to hear a little bit more about are construction timelines, the impact to the rail trail and the rest of the surrounding circulation networks. So that's one. There was mention of the Anarroyo issue upstream of the pipeline. And I want to get a little bit more clarification on what your role is there because the the resident said you were involved in some way, that you would be mitigating, creating some sort of mitigation. And maybe I missed out on the reading, but just some more information there. The next item is the open spaces on site. What percentage of those are calculated as detention basins? And then oftentimes, when we're looking at stormwater runoff and drainage, some of these these swales and bases have other uses for for the community. If it are there other uses built into some of these zones, but they're communities or not? Or are they going to be, which ones are going to be rip route and things like that? That would be helpful. And then I also share some of the concerns about the U-turn. I think it just, the way it was laid out in the plan, it would just be helpful to have a graphic on screen as we're talking about some of that. Because as as the reading, it's it's well, I was going back and forth quite a bit to try to lay those out. So those are, that's it. So those are, that's it for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Piccarello. Next, we're going to Commissioner Faulkner.
So I have some questions that are a little more 30,000-foot view questions, but probably for staff. Cause Commissioner Satina actually asked, got that out, the same questions I had for the developer out there. So when it comes, there's been a lot of, from the community, a lot of discussion about that we're a small town, that we're a town, that we're, you know, that, that we want to stay a small town. That kind of concept, not exactly a quote from the community, but that idea. So I, if staff can kind of give us some indications that what, at what point does a town become a city? And why that's important is then that initiates a certain kind of thinking around planning. Including like how much housing you need, what infrastructure you need, that kind of stuff. The other question I have is, what, if it can be identified, what is the difference between the housing needs in 1985, when the SCHC was created versus what they are now in the city? And then if it's possible to look at what other cities have done or towns, depending on whether we qualify as a city or a town, but of similar size, how they have addressed something like this, if that's possible. I don't know if that's possible. And then one of the community members mentioned something about the city council affirming the SCHC in 2017. I don't know if that's true or not, but would be curious to me if it was. That's something I'd like to know. In kind of putting together in my mind, which documents actually have jurisdiction and authority as we move forward? And so I think, I think that's all I have for now. Yeah, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Faulkner. Commissioner Lawrence, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Commissioner Faulkner, in part, asked what I was going to ask, so I appreciate that. My questions that are remaining, I think, are really for staff more than anything else. And that is a little bit more background about the, the highway corridor overlay. As Commissioner Faulkner said, there was the 2017 and 1999, someone said, there were reaffirmations. And I'm curious about that and what that person might have been referring to. And I would also be curious if there is information that could be provided about other similar examples of rezoning outside of an overlay zone such as this. I know the, the link overlap example was cited in the materials, but I really see that as a very different case of conflicting overlay zones rather than deciding that some subsection of property should not be part of an overlay zone. And so I'm curious about perhaps other examples in the city that we might look at for that. And Mr. Chair, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lawrence. Vice Chair Hogan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to start off by saying that, you know, this, this really is kind of, if you don't mind rolling up your sleeves and staying up late at night, this is a fun project because it's really embraces a lot of the issues that are facing Santa Fe right now. And I think it's kind of a privilege for us to be able to have some input on that. And I think that has to do with a lot of the things we've heard about tonight. And in general, I think it's a great place for density because of this location and its multimodal aspects about it. But there's still a lot of questions that I think, you know, the traffic deal for, for my satisfaction, the traffic still is not making sense to me. I'm not understanding the no left turn and how you get from phase one to phase two without going around the block. And, you know, maybe for the next meeting, it'd be helpful to just give us some scenarios and show us how, how, how it works. And also just regarding the overlay, I participated in the highway corridor overlay when it was done. And I'm pretty sure there's a, some language in that document, particularly towards the end where it says, this document ought to be revisited on a regular basis because things change. And I think this is a good example of that. So I can't swear that that document says that, but I'm pretty sure it pretty, it, there's some language in there about that. One of my other concerns, I guess, is pedestrian safety. We've got big roads in Zia and St. Francis. And I see a lot of great pedestrian maneuvering all on the west side of St. Francis. But how it goes out from there, I think we need to understand a little bit more about. And again, if you can, just create some scenarios. People going from one spot to another and, and show us how that, how that's working. I think architecturally, I like the mix of styles and things like that. I think the one that I have the most concern about is the multi, three-story apartment buildings. When I look at those illustrations compared to the site plan, I think there's just a lot of site development needs to happen because a perspective from going down the hill towards Zia and looking at that, it may be a little harsher than what you are intending. And that, and that covers it. It's, it's, it's an exciting project. I'm really, and I, and I do think in general, I really liked the, the cut, the thinking that went into the concept layout. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hogan. Anybody else forget anything or anything they want to put in? Let me know. Such brilliant commissioners, they left me speechless with all their input. Pedestrian safety thing, Francis Drive getting across to that Albertson's. Hopefully there's enough amenities to keep them on, on that side of the street. Density was talked about a lot and I think there should be a trade-off. And we didn't see anything trade-off for density for making this a more lead-friendly project. I would like to, to know the, I would like you to just take that under advisement as far as that goes. The other thing, I think Commissioner Piccarello mentioned it, is that condition 12, if that's a public safety issue, whether that comes back to staff with an answer or you, Ms. Jenkins, I'd like to hear a little bit more about that pipe of the, of the Arroyo. And then the only other thing I would say is I'd like to hear exactly what, what's prohibiting you from being a transit-oriented district to, what did you refer to it as?
Transit-focused.
Transit-focused. The, the exact reason that you're not transit-oriented, what, what's prohibiting you as to, as to transit-focused? I guess the, the last thing, and I would have liked to seen what that project could have looked like if it was through the South Central Highway Corridor. More dense, but, but I think probably one of the drawbacks was, was the height restriction and that. I don't know what other reasons, but it would have been interesting to see what that may have looked like. Besides that, I'm in good shape. They, they've done the heavy lifting for me. Ms. Jenkins, thank you for your work. Staff, thank you for your work. I would like to say to the commission that if they think of a question that they would like to get answered, if they're up at two in the morning and they send it off, I'm sure within reasonable time, it can be, it can be answered. Commissioner Satina, I see you raising your hand. You have the floor, sir.
Sorry, I got a new computer here. I wanted to point out that, that Vice Chair Hogan had his hand up. But before, since I have the floor, I actually do have one question. Should this project pass? One of, one of the examples that's, one of, one of the documents that's being pointed to is the 2008 study that made recommendations for this area. And one of the things that was included in there is more targeted underground pathways to get across to the other side of the street. I know that there's one that already exists further down from the, the, the development. But what is, what is the developer proposing to actually meet those recommendations from that report? And again, that's related to, to underground pathways to, to cross the street so that you're not crossing those major highways, which I know has been brought up by many residents in their, in their concerns.
Thank you, Commissioner Satina. Vice Chair Hogan, Commissioner Satina was leaving like this. I apologize. I didn't see your hand up, please.
No problem. I, I appreciate it, Mr. Chairman. I forgot one of the things I wanted to mention to the applicant. And just as I was looking at the development, I was really looking at how it intersected, the, how the outside edges of it intersected, particularly the neighbors and stuff. And I think the logic that went into it was really sound, but I think the understanding of the offset of heights and elevation is not clear. So I would propose that, or suggest that maybe some sections at those interface lines, you know, if you just go around the, the west side and there's a number of different conditions that if you give us a section, we get a sense of how the topography, the existing houses, things like that, how they match up. I personally am not afraid of the three-story. I don't think it's a, think, I think that it supports the density that we really want to have happen there. So anyway, I think some sections would help make that case. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I'm done now.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hogan. So now I'm probably looking for a motion and after the motion, I'd like to just talk to staff real quick to, and Ms. Jenkins to see if we forgot anything. Depending on where we land up, what would be a fair amount of time to get it into them by email or however. So, Ms. Jenkins, please.
Yeah, I just, thank you, Chair Gutierrez. I just wanted to kind of reiterate your, I'm really glad you suggested that because I think inevitably, you know, the commission may come up with additional questions because, you know, it's late, everybody's tired. So I really would encourage, you know, those could be conveyed to Lee and Noah, and then they could be passed on to me. And then our time at the, at the next hearing can be used really wisely. And I, I, we are dedicated to giving you all the answers that you deserve. And so if there, if there are any additional questions, we, we are, you know, incredibly willing and to receive those and be prepared to answer them cogently at the next hearing. So please, you know, don't be shy. We want to hear from you. So thank you.
If, if it's, if it's scheduled for the next February meeting, what's your threshold for paying cutoff? So you have a
I have no cutoff. It's okay. Well, we will, you know, we'll work it out. Sooner the better, obviously. But if there's something you think of on, you know, on Wednesday night, I, or Wednesday afternoon, I want to hear about it. Because we will, you know, we want, we want the opportunity to have the information pulled together for you.
Thank you so much. It's a big project. It's an exciting project. You can tell by the fact that the city didn't have enough Zoom capacity, even though they said they paid for more. Maybe the check bounced, who knows? So.
So, and I want to just thank you all for your time and attention this evening. It's, it's been a long evening. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, could I make a suggestion as far as the, the motion to, I don't know if it's, if we're tabling it, could Sally give us some language that could nail it? For whoever's going to make the motion?
Sure. I, I would probably say something along the lines of I moved postpone to date certain of February 18th to continue deliberations and questions with staff and the applicant. But to not reopen the public hearing. Something along those lines.
No, moved.
Second. Commissioner, give me a second.
My second.
Okay, we have Vice Chair Hogan moving with a second by Commissioner Satina.
Discussion Chair.
For discussion, Commissioner Faulkner, you have the floor.
I am okay with all that, other than the exclusion of community in the public hearing. I think if we're going, if, if the point of this is to give everyone the opportunity, including ourselves, to reflect on this and because this is, this is a huge lift. And it feels unfair to me that we wouldn't give community at least a little more time, like we're giving the applicant. That's the, that's the only thing that I would be opposed to in that, in that motion.
So an option would be to, I apologize for interrupting. I was just going to suggest an option would be to allow additional written public comments by our normal cutoff, but not to reopen for oral comments would be perhaps an additional option for your consideration.
Commissioner Cloud, because otherwise we'll be in the same boat. We'll be three hours into public comment and we'll be too tired to be discussing the substance. And, and I don't think we're doing anything different. I mean, we're just doing it in order and we're doing it over two meetings as opposed to one because the public comment was so long and extensive.
So would we, would we be okay with if I were to, I don't know how procedurally I would do this. If I were to say, let's take public comment in writing, but not have a hearing? Like what Sally suggested, would, would the
I think that's fine is that if anyone, if the public has further comments, they should submit them in time for us to be able to consider them.
So is that considered a friendly, what is this, an amendment to the motion, Sally?
Sure. I, I, I think this, this group has in the past honored friendly amendments. Everyone's comfortable with that and the maker of the motion and the second are okay with allowing additional written comments by our usual cutoff, which I think is my day at five before the hearing. But not to reopen for additional live comments in the interest of time.
Yeah.
I, I support the written comment, but I am very much against reopening the public hearing at the next meeting.
Commissioner Satina, is that all right with you? No. So the second is not liking the friendly amendment, so.
That's fine. Hold on real quick.
I'm, I'm sorry. I just
Commissioner Satina, real, real quick. Commissioner Garcia, you had your hand up. We're still in discussion. So let me, let me see if he still wants to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I just was, thought about anybody who has not had a comment. So like if somebody has already participated in the public comment section of this, of this meeting, if there's anybody else next meeting. So in other words, if they didn't have opportunity to get in the public hearing this time, if they could on the next time. I know that will also extend the meeting, but that's just an option. Just, that was my comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Mr. Logstine, your hand went up and down. Is there something you didn't want to add or was that just? You're okay, Mr. Logstine. Okay, Mr. Burke?
Thank you, Chair Commissioners. So just so you remember, this is going to go to city council. So there will be other public hearings. So, you know, to open it up to a, a second public hearing at the next meeting would, you know, that might, like Commissioner Claus said, it might get us to the same place or longer. And so, you know, if, if we're going to take written comments, can the commission, if, if that's what you guys want us to do, can you have this clear direction? If it's, if it's duplicate comments, because some of these comments were 80 pages long. And they're already in your packet. And I, I suspect we will see those same comments come back through and it would be 80 more pages. So if there is clear direction, because we, we've closed, right now, we've closed the public comment. It's done. And, and so I'd like to get, if that's what the commission wishes, can you please give us very clear direction so we know? And and so I'd like to get, if that's what the commission wishes, I can you please give us very clear direction so we know what we what to prepare for next meeting?
Well, so Mr. Burke, be right with you.
I offered the friendly amendment or what I hoped was friendly. Then I would agree with with, I would say in my amendment that it should be written comment and if it's duplicated, we don't need to see it again.
Real quick, Eric, who's Eric? Is he staff or who? We have a hand raised.
Eric Onis, our MPO Director from a Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Okay, let everybody think about what's been thrown around and let's see what Eric has to say real quick.
Mr. Chair, members of the committee. I would be remiss without making a quick statement as I've been observing closely what is a fair and thoughtful process is that for the caller who made a blatant statement of of threat and violence, that that is not what the city represents. And during this particular time in history, that perhaps a call on that call that could be condoned. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Director Eisenstein, please.
Thank you, Chair. I think it's also important just to to mention that there's not going to be any new information being sort of changes to the application or anything like that in the time between the meetings. And so I'm not sure if additional public comment is necessarily required because there's not going to be new things for folks to react to. Also, I think we, over the course of, you know, a robust public comment, public hearing, I think we saw some trends emerge in the sort of the issues that the the residents, the neighbors have with with this proposal. And I think a lot of you have identified those questions in sort of the foreshadowing that we did going around and giving every commissioner five minutes. So I don't I I understand the the wanting, the spirit of of maintaining and keeping public comment open, but I don't know how productive that would be. And as Secretary Cloud mentioned, I would hate for us to get back from this situation at the next meeting where it's too late in the evening and we haven't had a chance to really dig into the issues and try to arrive at some recommendations for the governing bodies. So I just thought I would I would throw that out there.
No, and so Thank you, Director Eisenstein. One second. Let me then the Commissioner Satania had his hand up first. So let me get to him and then we'll go to you.
Sorry.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to comment that I don't support the friendly amendment. I appreciate, I appreciate the intent from Commissioner Faulkner. However, my perspective is that this is a continuation of the meeting. The public comment is closed. And really what we're doing is we're going back to look at the evidence that has been provided and the public comment that is that is that exists from this meeting and to continue the rest of what we would normally be doing, which is not taking additional public comments. And my other concern is how is how is the staff going to manage if we're getting multiple letters to cross reference who actually spoke and who didn't speak and what we're getting, not getting? And I don't think that we should over complicate the the process. You know, the process is the process. I mean, there's public comment and there's there's one shot at that. And and that's what I would like to say in terms of 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 not supporting the friendly amendment.
Okay, so Vice Chair Hogan and and yourself are on the same page. No public comment. Am I correct?
That's correct. And I would I would say then there's still a motion on the floor for us to go on.
That's before we vote.
Commissioner Cloud calls the motion. Commissioner Cloud calls the motion.
Okay, so at this point, if I'm not mistaken, we need to vote if we should call the motion. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so Melissa, well, first, Sally, if you'll just explain on Commissioner Claus.
Calling the motion is is essentially cutting off debate on a motion that's on the floor. And if the motion doesn't pass, of course, it can be more motions, but it's going ahead and seeing if there's support for the existing motion that has had some discussion.
Okay, so if it if it passes, we vote on on the motion on the floor. Melissa, you'll call the role, please.
Commissioner Chavis.
Yes.
Is that yes?
Yes, for the motion.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Cloud.
Yes.
Commissioner Faulkner?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hogan?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Picarello?
Yeah.
Commissioners Satania?
Yes.
The motion has been approved.
Okay, so now we vote on the motion to postpone to February 18th, no public comment.
I apologize if I was unclear. Normally a motion to call, like calling the question is a vote on the actual motion itself. I may have not explained that well. So if that if that intent wasn't clear, it's it's great to go ahead and have another vote, but ordinarily calling the question is actually calling for the vote, I think. Right. But let's let's vote on, we can vote on it one more time to make sure everybody knows for sure. They're voting now on the substance of the motion on the floor, which I have still as a motion to postpone to a date certain of February 18th to continue deliberations and questions of applicant and staff, but to keep the public hearing closed.
Yep. Melissa, you'll call.
Yes, Commissioner Chavis?
Yes.
Commissioner Cloud?
Yes.
Commissioner Faulkner?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Hogan?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Picarello?
Yeah.
Commissioner Satania?
Yes.
The motion has been approved.
Thank you. We'll see you on the 18th. And moving on is staff communications.
Thank you, Chair Commissioners. Just to clarify, at the wishes of the commission, so for the next meeting that we're postponing this this case to or these cases, are we, is it the wishes of the commission to go ahead and amend that agenda at the meeting to postpone those cases that are listed or would the commission like to hear one or two of them or just focus solely on this?
I'm seeing solely on this. If we can have a raise of hands for solely on this.
Does that need a motion, Sally?
I mean, it's kind of informal. This isn't a real action item. I think I would construe this as a sort of recommendation to staff so that staff can communicate to the applicant that their case is is going to be postponed. So I I think the informal show of hands was demonstrating significant support for just just Zia Station again on the 18th.
And so Sally, just procedurally, we just amend the agenda up to 72 hours before the meeting, but probably, you know, by next week and we
Yeah, so we'll go into our posted agenda and its normal posted location will say postpone to March 4th, I believe is going to be. So we'll just go ahead and put that on this existing agenda. We'll leave those items on there, but we'll say postpone and then we'll add this additional item as postponed from February 4th and we can move our ethics and government training to whatever we're ready.
Mr. Chair. Vice Chair Hogan, please. Can I just ask staff if there's anything significant on either of those two cases being bumped that going to penalize them? If you would let us know if there's if they're fairly simple cases. And I don't want to you know, unnecessarily delay them. So if you can give us some feedback on that, if it's something that's going to penalize them because they didn't get heard at that meeting.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners and Vice Chair Hogan. Well, Jenkins Gavin is one of the cases and the other cases is, I'm forgetting, blanking on names right now, but it's basically next to Awkwafina. Awkwafina that we had heard before. So it's a it's actually Lee's case as well. And I'm sure they can alert his applicant to that. I don't think there's any kind of pressing deadlines with those cases. I think we have the flexibility built in. Just it just happens to be that we didn't have any meetings scheduled for March. We didn't have any applications. I think we actually have that leeway to bump them about 10 days. So.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other staff communications?
No, Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Communications from the commission. Go ahead, Commissioner Faulkner.
I just, I want to say thank you to staff and to my fellow commissioners and to the chair. I think we did a good job of muddling through a very heavy lift. And I just in a Pollyanna way, I'm kind of proud of us tonight. So I just want to say thank you to everyone who participated in finding our way through this in a responsible way.
Very good. Mr. Faulkner, Commissioner Satania?
Yes, I am not as Pollyanna about this. I've raised this concern with some of the staff that having a almost 900-page document and only six days to review such an important decision is not workable. And I think for future cases that how we approach recommendations to the city, to the governing body with with multiple facets to a development in addition to questions about existing, you know, ordinances within chapter 14 that are being questioned versus the intent of, I mean, that's a lot to take on. And I just want it for public record. You know, that that we look at other ways to to approach this because it's made it very difficult for for, I think, and I'll speak for myself, to really wrap my head around. And it's nice that we're kind of digesting this and we'll come back in a couple of weeks, but I think this is a very important decision and 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 will be a huge statement to our community and how we decide this will set precedent for the future. So again, if we can look to avoid these situations in the future, I think that's what I want to leave with. So thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners Satania. Secretary Cloud, you have your hand up?
Yes, I just wanted to say that I thought the report was really well done. I thought it was really well organized. It was easy to follow. And what was really helpful were the findings of facts and conclusions of law. Because after reading the whole report, that sort of pulled it all together and made it clearer. So I thought it was really, really well done. And it is complicated, but the way it was put together made it much easier for me. So good work.
If I could piggyback on that, tremendous kudos to Lee for all of his work on this. This is one of the most complex. Lots of moving parts type cases we've dealt with in a really long time. And I think Lee handled it really, really well. And I think the staff report was a testament to his deep understanding of the case and the issues at hand and his ability to simplify it in a way that I think brought people up to speed quickly. I just hats off to Lee. I think he did a really nice job on on that aspect of the case. So and I thought the introduction today also is really well done as well and sort of framing what it was we were thinking about and how to sort of view what it was we were sort of what was in front of us this evening. So thank you, Lee.
Thank you, Director Eisenstein. Commissioners, anyone else?
I know I missed my turn, but can we give a shout out to Melissa too? I just have to acknowledge that we have such a good stenographer helping this group. And every time she shows up, she's for in about 80 people today. I don't know how many, but the the job she does in keeping us on track and then the notes and minutes that she provides are excellent. So I just wanted to add that. Tonight I was thinking about how lucky we are to have you, Melissa.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Melissa. Before we adjourn, I want to apologize to all staff members that spent the last five hours with us and didn't get to talk. You should get your turn at the next meeting. We're hoping and Commissioners and staff, thank you so much for making this first full meeting with me as chair easy to navigate. With that, I think we can be adjourned.
Good night.
Thanks, everyone.